Good morning, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming. Oh, hold on Jerry.
Can you start?
Yeah, that's nine o'clock, but I'm gonna talk to a couple of different things. Do you have something?
Nope, I was turning my recorder.
Okay.
I did turn.
We'll call the meeting to order. It's nine o'clock. Thank you all for coming out today. I see we have a good-sized audience today. Roll call, is everyone expected to be here? Or we're having a little bit of technical difficulties with getting Lori online, I understand, so we may hold off for a little bit. Bill's not here. Is he expected to be here, do we know?
I did have not heard.
Okay. So, we're gonna see if we can't get Lori online here, and why we're doing that. I just wanna kinda make a few announcements here before we get started and before we get into the approval of the agenda. Just for the audience who may or may not know, we've had this in committee for several months now, I believe, right?
A year.
A year and a month.
A year and a month. And so, a lot of stuff has been hashed out. So, a lot of what we're doing today is, this is for the Planning Commission to give our concerns, and I wanna go through the package first with the Planning Committee, if they have any concerns, and then address that, those specific concerns with those who are here that are willing to talk about those items. I don't wanna go through page by page and have everybody come up and give their concerns on it at that moment. I would like for the Planning Commission to discuss those concerns, walk through it, if they have any clarification questions, be able to ask and reach out to you guys for some clarification, if that makes sense. Most of y'all realize we're running on a deadline, and to be fair to the audience and to the public and to the companies, if this keeps getting pushed back, pushed back, if that deadline ends, there's gonna be a potential that the old ordinance is gonna be the fallback ordinance for time. And so, I've gotta ask, you've gotta ask yourself, is that what you want to happen if we keep delaying this? So, I don't wanna stop any public comment this afternoon. I will entertain public comment at the very end, right before we make a motion to finalize, but I'd like to limit it to three minutes per individual, and I'd like to do it, if you've got the same thing to say, just say, "I agree with so-and-so, and here's my new information that I would like for you to consider." Because really, what we wanna do is, we wanna recommend approval or non-approval to go to the Board of Commissioners, so that they can have their hearings and then they can have their public comment as well. Does that make sense? And I still don't see Lori online.
Um, just go ahead and just say it first.
Okay.
We'll get her in from the camp.
So, all that kinda buy us a little bit of time, so I can tell you that while we're waiting, so.
Travis?
Yes ma'am.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. This is a draft ordinance, and we're getting recommendations, and I think some people think this is final. It's not final. That was just a recommending body for committee. All committees are recommending bodies for a draft. So, anything on this can be changed through the Planning Commission, or there's still two readings through the County Board. So, this is not final. This is, I'll keep saying it's a recommending body. It's, this is not a final draft. So, if anything you'd like to change, please give your recommendations to the Planning Commission and the County Board, 'cause we've got some really good ideas. Thank you.
So, for the agenda, we just need approval for the agenda? Is there a motion?
I approve approval.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right. Ordinance amendment. I think I would like, Rich, last time you asked how we wanted to go through this, my thought process for today would be, we go page one, is there any concerns? If not, let's move to page two. If you have a question about page two, if there's something in there that draws your attention, and we wanna ask Michelle, we wanna ask the audience, hey, these were the comments that we wanna address, let's bring that individual up, ask those questions that you have for concerns, to kinda get clarification, if it helps make up your mind on that particular part. Make sense? Can I ask one thing before we start moving through? Jerry, does everyone have the updated information you told me about the wording change? That you, was it you that was talking to me about the wording change for the 30-day notices?
Yeah, when we get there.
Okay, we'll talk about those. There's some minor changes that have been tweaked on each of these pages, that we'll present those, so that y'all are aware of what was tweaked, so that it was in line and in harmony with things that are going on. All right, so, page one of 17. Anybody have any questions or any concerns about the first page? Seeing none?
No.
Page two of 17. Any concerns, questions, or comments about any of the additions or comments from the past? I'm sorry, one quick question. PJ, did you find out the question I had right before we left? Is there any concern?
Uh, PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Michelle Hoffman from the State's Attorney's Office was making comment on that, and it'd be best if the attorney comments on that.
And she's not here right now?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. Page three, anybody?
I have a comment on page two.
From the Planning Commission, if they have concerns with the comments that have come through, if they say, "I wanna address that situation more," then they would ask for you to come forward to ask you to clarify, if you, at this point in time. At the end, we'll allow you to give your input about something that we may not have addressed, that you feel still needs to be addressed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes ma'am.
Uh, I did notice one comment on the section that says, "The mining of sand gravel or rock is allowed only in the following zoning districts."
Okay.
And the comment pointed out that forest service lands slash public lands really isn't a zoning district. It's a different type of designation. Is there, could you comment on that, PJ?
Go ahead PJ.
Hi. Commissioner, you're correct, it's not under our current zoning districts, they are districts in our future land use zoning under the comp plan, basically under as public lands.
So, is there a, is there a word change here that could be made to clarify that and to make it, you know, more accurate, more correct?
We just used the term "public lands" and "future land use." We've seen them used as US Forest Service, we've seen them used as public domain, we've seen them used as USA public domain.
For example, should the first part, rather than reading "only in the following zoning districts" or, you know, or "land use," be added there to make it more correct?
Added where?
Like, for example, "The mining of sand gravel or rock is allowed only in the following districts or future land use designations," or, 'cause you say it's not exactly a district, a zoning district, but it is a future land use category.
Correct, and I can tell you that all public lands that are under future land use are currently general ag.
So, is that, is number three even necessary then? If it's gen-
Why did you want it in there? You didn't, the committee did? It may be. It's not gonna hurt anything. We don't have jurisdiction, Forest Service, anyway.
Right, that's right.
But it's more clarification.
I can answer that. Some of the public wanted that in there, so we just added it, so it would suffice forest lands and public lands, so people knew that it could be sand gravel or rock is allowed only in, and where they're allowed. And if we discounted it, then maybe people didn't know that it could be in forest and public lands.
I see.
So, it's just a general information, 'cause a lot of people are on Planning Commissions and different things, so they don't know all the categories and stuff, so that was a public comment, and we decided that it wasn't a big deal and that we would add it.
Okay. Well, I mean, and I don't have any objection having it here, I just, you don't wanna make sure that it's stated correctly, and it strikes me as it right now, since it's not a zoning district, there's just a little bit of disconnect in how it's worded.
So, if it said something like, "Only in the following, uh, current existing zoning districts and future land use districts?"
Yes, I think future land use-
That's what you're looking to do, is just add clarity?
Future land use district or designation, or whatever the proper term is, yes.
Anybody have a concern with adding that language, just to make clarification?
Following zoning districts and public lands?
Well, that's okay too, whatever makes most sense, but just to make sure that it's, you know, really accurate and correct.
So, Jerry's gonna actively make changes if we say we agree that that makes sense, so that we don't have to make a motion and approval on each one of them, we'll do just a couple edits if we're all in agreeance, just on a verbal, and then that way we'll know what the final document says at the end, if we just, whatever motion we decide to make.
Well, I'm perfectly okay with what's written up there now, Jerry, with your modification.
Awesome. Also, I just wanna let everyone know Lori's on, thank you, welcome Lori.
Yeah, welcome to you. Sorry I wasn't ready, my computer was updating. Mr. Chair?
Yes ma'am.
Would you please, I'd like to remind everybody to please speak directly into the microphone.
Absolutely, I fully understand. I was on a phone call, a teleconference the other day, and it's really hard if you don't speak into the microphone. So, if you come up here, if we are talking to you, make sure you bring that mic, it's gonna be a little, you know, close for comfort, but trust me, so that the individuals on the other side can hear you wanna speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead PJ.
Yeah, Commissioners, one item to think about is, I know we were adding the future land use to cover public lands, but there are future land use designations for A1 ag and heavy industrial, so those would also be included. So, even if something is not zoned, general ag or heavy industrial now in the current zoning district, but it is in the future land use, it could possibly cause some people a concern.
Gotcha. Lori, I just wanna give you a heads-up of what we're doing, 'cause I kinda laid out some, what we're, how we're gonna go through this. We're gonna go page by page, and if you have a concern that you would like to ask the audience or someone for a comment from, that you've seen comments or concerns about, bring that up, or if you have something you would like to have clarification. But we're gonna try to hold all public comment until the end, unless there specifically be a reference for a question that they've made a comment about.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then Michelle, do you have an answer on the topic we were talking, discussing prior to me coming out here?
Are you referencing conflict of interest?
Yes ma'am.
SDCL 6-117 states, "No county, municipal, or school official may participate in discussing or vote on any issue in which the official has a conflict of interest. Each official shall decide if any potential conflict of interest requires such official to be disqualified." So, with regard, I believe this is with regards to Commissioner Marsh, that would be a question that he would have to personally decide, unless, there are a couple qualifications. "No such official may participate in discussing or vote on any issue if the following circumstances apply. One, the official has a direct pecuniary interest in the matter before the governing body, or at least two-thirds of the governing body decides that that particular commissioner official has a conflict of interest." So, the way I'm reading the statute is, unless Commissioner Marsh has a direct pecuniary interest in this issue, and I suppose you could debate that, given his employment status, but I don't think it's actually direct, I think it's up to Commissioner Marsh to make that decision.
Okay. Mr. Chair, could you define the word that you just said, procurement, what was it?
Pecuniary is financial.
Okay.
All right, there was a question that stemmed, so I wanted Michelle to address that, just in case.
Okay.
So, I like your input, so I still would like to have your input either way.
Not a problem.
All right, so page two, any further comments from page two? Any other?
Mr. Chair, I have some comments.
Yes, go ahead.
My first one was in Section 212, Heavy Industrial District, and it just says, "Provided a mining permit is obtained in accordance with Section 320." And I have, and I don't have an answer here, more than, more than just a question, maybe for committee members. It's not clear to me, right now, there's probably, you know, current permits that were approved under the construction permit, permits, and then, so how do those transfer then into, you know, the zoning district and/or to Section 320? And I don't have an answer here, but more than, more of a question for maybe some folks when it comes time.
Okay.
My second item, so not necessarily a change, per se, in Section 312. My second thought is, is that under Section 320(c) authority, it looks to me like the text is just rewriting what South Dakota Codeified Law 11213 already states. Same thing with 456b-4, so should those just be listed, or do you need to restate the text?
Deb, do you wanna answer that one? 'Cause I know we had a lot of discussion on that one, and there's a reason why it's written in there.
Someone from the public had said that would be easier for us to, or for them to have that stated in there, so we didn't see a big deal with that. So, if that helps the public to understand it more.
Saves them a step in looking up the laws, is what it is.
Yes, sir. We wanna make it as apparent that how you get to where you get is actually on this ordinance, is in text for everybody, not just a company that wants to do mining. This is for the public as well, so we did listen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes Lori.
I had one general comment, just throughout. I noticed that there are a few places where it was specifically noted that you would get tribal input or something like that. Do we have to make sure that throughout the proposed ordinance, that when we make reference to local, state, federal, that we include tribal agencies and other, you know, we're asking for comment, or we're talking about applicability of rules and laws?
Well, the committee decided that it was not gonna hurt anything to place that in there. Correct me if I'm wrong Deb. There was a lot of discussion about it in the committee, there was a lot of concern about it, and knowing that the process does include that, stating it in this ordinance, no one had a concern on the committee.
Okay, so from what I understood, and I listened to the transcript of your, you know, your meeting a few days ago, or the committee meeting, or the committee hearing, and it sounded to me like the tribal input is there, it's just a recognition that it's there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Sorry.
Michelle, did you have a point to clarify?
I just wanted to point out that Chapter 456b concerns land reclamation. I know it's citing the language straight from 456b4, however, I just wanted to point that out, it's not actually actively dealing with the issue of sand gravel and construction aggregate mining, which is Chapter 45-6, so I'm not sure if-
So, 6 is the one that's supposed to be more appropriate, not 6b? I think I remember hearing that.
Miss Nancy from the public, she had talked about this, and for some reason, I don't remember all of her wording, but she had some good comments on it.
And I thought she had sent an email correcting that as well.
Yes.
Nancy, is that correct? Can you please come forward and speak into the mic?
Originally, I was misinformed from DNR, who told me that that applied to both sand and gravel, which is Chapter 45-6, and mineral mining, which is Chapter 45-6b. Then they changed their mind and said it only applied to Chapter 45-6b. However, you have now added a paragraph, two paragraphs on the second to last page, adding 456b to being covered here. So, you could leave this in here if you someplace in the text very clearly have a definition of 46, uh, Chapter 46-6, which is sand gravel and rock, and 45-6b, which is mineral mining, and be very clear that this part here limits or modifies the mineral mining section of the ordinance, but not the sand and gravel section of the ordinance. So, when you added the two paragraphs that brought in mineral mining, you made this applicable. I don't know if I'm making any sense.
Although, what Nancy is referring to is in fact an amendment to 507b, so 507b is not even part of Section 320, so it wouldn't be applicable to this particular ordinance.
Okay, so then, so then this needs to be added to what is, what's on, if you flip through the thing, it's on page 18, minerals, Section 507. It needs to be added there, not here.
So, Chairman, can I ask Ms. Nancy a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Nancy, so it should be, we'll just take this out, and, 'cause you helped us with this.
Right.
So, take this out, and then just make sure it's in the back pages like we had it.
Yeah, it modifies and limits what you can do with respect to stuff covered under Chapter 456b. It does not modify and limit what you can do under Chapter 45-6, which is sand and gravel.
And that's how you explained it to me on the email you gave me. Thank you, Ms. Nancy.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. And this should be, the reference should be 45-6-4, is that correct then? No, it shouldn't even be in there at all?
No.
Okay.
We're gonna-
Remove.
That's not my place, so.
Yep, go ahead, let's remove.
The whole thing is underlined?
Well, 11213 is still applicable, right? As far as I understand?
That pertains to the text prior to it. So, they're referencing the text, the law after the text.
Okay. Anyone on the commission have any questions, comments, or concerns, or would you like to remove it? Do you feel like we need to keep the?
I think, I mean, it's my understa, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's my understanding that SDCL 11213 is the statute that allows the authority that was just, that was just prior, you know, listed.
Correct.
And so, that should stay, and I never, I was, I was fumbling by, because it, there should be a period after that, or, you know, "Any county which has adopted da-da-da." That doesn't seem to, there needs to be some punctuation, or there's missing word or something.
Or it could just be removed. I agree with that. Okay.
But I think it's fine to list that citation, essentially, of where that authority comes from, and then I'm confused about the rest of that sentence, where it just starts saying "any county."
Okay, so you would like to remove?
I think the sentence is fine. I think 456b-4 is just maybe be removed-
Okay.
-from that, and then replaced later on in the mineral stuff.
Gotcha, so looking at the screen over here, that's what we believe should be appropriate?
Yes, and if indeed, if SDCL 11213 says, "Any county which has adopted a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances may adopt ordinance," or, I think it should say, like, SDCL 11-2-13, which states that, "Any county," or, you know, give some, give some connection there, rather than just starts, starts that sentence with an, with "any."
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I believe the phrase "any" and the subsequent language actually stems from the statute, which is inapplicable.
Okay, so then it needs to be out. All right, very good, thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you, Michelle, for that clarification. All right, any further questions, comments, concerns? That moves us to page three. I know we were at the top of page three of 17, but any other comments? Actually, since we're gonna, the rest of it is dealing with definitions, let's just kinda push all the way through the definitions, if you have any concerns about any of the definitions.
No.
Nope? All right, so mining permit E, at the end, at the bottom of page four, four of 17. Anything to ask, questions about, clarification, any changes?
Travis, just so the audience know, the applicant shall make a good faith effort, we changed that. It's slashed out of it, no longer in it, 'cause that was a major concern of many people from the public that were calling and emailing me and texting me on that, so I thought that was a good change.
So, what is the implications of that? 'Cause I know that, I was, I was in there for some of that conversation. If we tried, if a property owner's trying to notify all their neighbors, and one neighbor refuses to accept the letters, is that still going to qualify as them trying, as notifying their neighbor, certified mail? 'Cause I know we talked about that being certified mail and things of that nature. I just wanna make sure that, do we have to have a physical contact with each and every person that fits in that?
Um-
Does that, taking that wording out?
I remember the conversation, we changed 30 business days, so people had more of a chance to get ahold of those people. Letters of this purpose shall send those to all property identified on the list provided by Planning Commission, based on equalization. Certified mail was the key.
Okay, so since we do have that in there, that counts as notification, 'cause we send it to them.
Right, and just because you certify doesn't mean they have to sign for it, but at least they were notified, and it gives a second step, instead of just sending a letter and then, you know, you have no idea.
Okay.
You actually have to certify it and send all those people notices.
All right, I just wanna make sure that doesn't hold it up, because, you know, John Smith decides not to get his mail.
Well, and we had a lot of public comment on that, and it came up to 30 business days, instead of 10 was the most discussion, and people, a lot of the group, this is not including just the committee, but the people that were in the public, we thought that was a good idea, and a good suggestion.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes Lori.
On the definitions, I just wanted to note that substantial, under substantial step is misspelled.
Sure. Okay. Correct that. All right, Jerry's gonna get that corrected.
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to understand the, the distance that is required, this 500 feet, that with any property owner you need to notify, how does that 500 feet compare to the distance that is required, you know, for the notifications, like for conditional use permits or other things that the county does? Is it consistent, or is this different, or how does it compare?
Exactly the same.
Very good, thank you.
All right, any further questions, concerns, comments for page four? Page five of 17. There's two items to note on here, you'll see them highlighted. The first one is in the public hearing, Section 2, dealing with harmony. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, or anything that you read in the comments you wanna address or ask questions about? Or are we all comfortable with having harmony in there? I will tell you my opinion, if you remove it, it takes the discretion away from the board, and you're only limiting the board to the letter of the law. If I understand that correct, is that correct, Michelle? And I just wanna make sure that we all understand, if you remove that word, it leads it to black and white, and we have, if there's anything for discretion, it can, it can take away discretion, if there's something else that's not to be considered.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. The language in harmony with the purpose and intent of Section 320 is consistent with language you will also find under the conditional use ordinance. It does grant limited, I would argue, limited discretion by the Planning Commission. If you accept the proposed change of MEATC's requirements, the Planning Commission shall approve, then it does, it does eliminate, in my opinion, almost any discretion that this Planning Commission would have. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead Kathy.
When I was thinking about that word harmony, what I, I started thinking about, okay, so harmony with the purpose and intent. I don't really see where intent is discussed, but purpose is certainly intent, discussed on page two, and so the purpose is the development and utilization of resources in a manner compatible with neighboring land use. So, to me, the key part here is compatibility with neighboring land use. Is that, is that accurate?
Mr. Conover may have some comments. I think the intent would be to protect the well, health, welfare, and safety of the community. I mean, there's, no document can anticipate every factual scenario, so there may be an instance where the mining, the mining operation proposed potentially could present a threat to well, health, welfare, and safety. So, that's just the way I interpret it.
Okay.
In harmony, consistent with the purpose and intent, the purpose, as you stated, and the intent to protect the health, welfare, and safety. I don't know if PJ has a different interpretation.
Okay.
He's shaking his head, no.
So, building on that, so also struck me on, and I'm moving just slightly, but this is relevant, Travis, believe me, on page 15, when it talks about renewals, it said that a new, that the very end of Section E on page 15, the first E, "The new mining permit shall be required and approved only after a public hearing and finding that the change will not adversely affect neighboring properties." So, it's, that's a different purpose and intent, "will not adversely affect," versus under purpose, which is a manner compatible. And it just seems to me there's a bit of confusion, what really is our standard there, that we would use when we are, when we are, when our choices either to, you know, approve or deny, or something?
Go ahead Deb.
There seems to be some, needs to be some consistency with that.
I'm with Nancy, 'cause the harmony, is there a better word? And I don't know what that word is, and that's why we brought it forward. We didn't discount that, people thought that, we just went past that, the committee- the committee did, but we just ran out of time to talk about harmony and personal, person aggrieved. So harmony, I wasn't in agreement with, but I also needed to hear from more people than just our committee of where we could go with that word to make it, Michelle says it's in our other ordinance, but that doesn't mean it has to stay in this one. You wanna, you wanna do like when you're doing, if it's already an ordinance, yes, but if you're making an ordinance, is there a different word for harmony?
Just one second, Gina. Anybody have any further comment on that before I let someone who might have a different word?
Mr. Chair, I guess maybe a perspective. I'm not in favor of the word harmony as well. I sat on a homeowners board where a guy wanted to build a shed and he wasn't in harmony with the subdivision supposedly, and it went to the Supreme Court and a lot of money was spent. You know, one of the things that we struggle with as a board, specifically with vacation home rentals, for example, is, is consistency, applying the rules consistency, consistently. And so my concern with, with harmony is, is just that, is, is how do you be consistent when the board is, is ever changing? If that makes any sense.
Good point.
And so those are, those are my concerns with the word harmony. You know, I, I think that the applicant needs to have met the requirements of Section three-twenty. Further, if the planning commission, the section below that, the application review, which is similar to the C U P, those items down there, the A, B, C, D, and E below in mining permit application review, if there's additional items that the planning commission would have concerns with, with respect to those, then I don't think that that precludes the planning commission from having additional conditions put on, on a permit or, or questions. But harmony is a really hard word to define from past experience.
So Rich, can you, if we took out the word harmony and just put application with the purpose and intent of three-twenty, would that take care of what we're saying as well, I guess?
I, I-
Because they still have to follow the rules. In harmony, to me, like you, it adds, could, could not be harmony, could, could or could not be in-
The board should deny the application if the applicant has not met the requirements of Section three-twenty.
But then that brings you down to the letter of the law. I mean, if, bing, 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 there's no, there's no leeway, if I understand that would be correct, because if they meet it.
But, but the leeway of the board would be to place conditions on, on certain things, on site-specific items. Does that make sense?
So then-
So, so, for example, I mean, if the effect of the proposed operation on public health, safety, and general welfare was there, and the board discussed it, I, couldn't the board say that this would be an additional requirement due to this specific concern on this item? See what I'm saying? I, I also read some of the letters that, that came from folks in the audience and, and that were submitted to us via email. And I, I think that that's, that's the general concern is that things aren't going to be taken into consideration on a, you know, site basis. But I don't, I don't read that in, in Section three-twenty.
Okay, so you offered a little bit of change of wording. How would you word that?
I would say, or deny the application if, I started the word if, if the applicant has not met the requirements of Section three-twenty.
You don't like purpose and intent of Section three-twenty? When Kathy read those, I liked.
Purpose and intent.
That it, it outlines a purpose and intent, so they don't just go to three-twenty, they look at the intent at the back, they look at the purpose throughout the ordinance, which is not just beginning of three-twenty. How about that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sunny.
As an alternative, see, I'm not, I'm not so pleased with the requirements word being used, but instead of-
Sunny, can you speak into the mic? It's a little harder for Lori to hear you probably.
Instead of in harmony, about if not consistent with. We've been saying consistent over and over, and that might actually be the more easily defined term.
Good word.
Consistent. Rich?
Good question.
I don't know if I have any problem with that. Just out of curiosity, Michelle, can I ask, from legal standpoint, what would that do? We know some of our things that we do, we can really-
I think it's a matter of definition. I, I interpret harmony to be mean consistent. So whether you reference in harmony, or you say has not met the requirements of Section three-twenty, you know, or being, or consistent with the purpose and intent of three-twenty, I think you're essentially saying the same thing. If you leave it to the, what Commissioner March is indicating, if you take out that language, what he's suggesting is you either accept, you either accept or deny the application. And your only discretion is what conditions you can put on the permit.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Hi, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kathy.
I, I feel that the purpose and intent of Section three-twenty needs to be said in there because to me, the requirements are simple things like, did you, you know, did you file your application? And does it include these things? And, you know, it's, it's kind of a checklist, if you will. Whereas purpose and intent is a little more than that. And so I, I feel that that needs to be in there. I, I mean, if it were me with words, I would just simply say, and maybe, maybe this has already been said, but, or deny the application if not, if, if not meeting the purpose and intent of Section three-twenty. I mean, just, here again, it's, it's not a exact word, but I think it's a pretty well-used word. You know, you either meet that purpose and intent, or you don't meet it.
Or you're consistent with it.
Yeah, inconsistent's fine, or, you know, whatever it might be.
Harmony seems to me a little bit, little softer, you know, a little more mushy than, than consistent or meeting. But I, I understand what the attorney is saying, that it could be interpreted, you know, exactly the same way. But, so whatever the word, whatever, whatever the comfort level on the exact word is, I, I think it's important that the, as I said, I'll just say, purpose and intent is there. But then I think we need to make sure that purpose and intent is not ambiguous. And that's why I think it needs to be defined the same in the purpose, the purpose section on page two, as it does in this latter section when it talks about this new mining permit. I mean, there need to be the same. So we don't have to start stumbling about, well, what exactly is the purpose and intent? And so this, that's why that needs to be real consistent, I believe.
Ms. Commissioner, are you suggesting then that on page two of seventeen, under letter B, it would be purpose and intent, and that would be the definition?
Well, I mean, it would make it simpler for people like me that want to go back and look at how things are defined. You know, I wouldn't be stumbling around looking for what the intent says.
Any thoughts on that, just because we're here? Does that change anything specifically?
What was, um, sorry, Chairman. So, Ms. Kathy, so what was, what was the issue with the purpose and intent? I mean, you wanted something added?
I think, no, I think it's, I think it's fine. I mean, the only thing is in the title, it, to make it consistent with that other paragraph, it could be purpose and intent.
Okay.
But I'm, you know, like Jerry has it right now on the screen. I mean, I'm not, I mean, it's not necessary, but I just think it's more of a convenience and things hang together a little bit better. But what I'm suggesting, and I'll say this again when I get, when we get to page fifteen, I think there needs to be a change there to make it consistent with this.
Purpose and intent, right.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any further question or comments on that? I, I think actually we're, we're probably good with that wording. Did I, did I catch that from everyone, that we're pretty good with that wording that we have in Section two for public hearing?
Consistent or-
Meeting.
Purpose and intent, and then consistent with, if I'm correct? Is that what you wanted?
Purpose and intent of.
Was that your intention, Sunny?
Scroll up and see what the wording is now for under public hearing.
Public hearing, Chair.
Yep, Jerry, she wants to see that one.
Should be number two.
Uh, page five.
Page five, number two.
Right there.
Sorry.
Not meeting the purpose and intent. That's, that's okay with me. I, I don't really-
Consistent with the purpose or content.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine too, to put inconsistent with, it's-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sunny.
I'm wondering, what is the difference between purpose and intent? Do we really require both words to be in there at all?
Yeah, because when we just defined it at the front of three-twenty now.
We have purpose, but does intent add anything to purpose?
Michelle?
It could be there. It don't affect anything.
You were there.
I mean, is it consistent terminology throughout any other laws and ordinances and things?
I think we're overthinking this a little bit. The purpose and intent, you could argue intent and purpose is the same thing, you know, the law. You know, some people throw in extra words. I think we're overthinking a little bit.
Okay.
We did that a lot, but sometimes it's good because some people understand things more than other people. So we want to make sure we're all on the same page, but thank you.
So my point is that I'm in the same position that you are. I reviewed this document after it's drafted. So I'm, I can only respond to how I might interpret it. I think everyone here has, you know, our-
Did we put, by the way, do we put meeting with or consistent?
Okay.
Travis, didn't we put consistent?
Kathy suggested meeting.
But consistent is fine.
Either way.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with meeting too, so, but, so meeting, meeting the purpose of Section three-twenty, get rid of intent, get rid of it before. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Kathy can? Get rid of intent?
Get rid of the word and intent. And get rid of it.
That was from Sunny. I don't know, did you?
It's, it's fine with me. I, I guess that I'm getting rid of intent here, then we wouldn't have to redefine purpose at the, in, prior. It's just, what I'm looking for is, it's-
So meeting with the purpose and getting rid of intent, and then getting rid of intent in the front.
That's right, that's fine.
And then changing your paper that you wanted in, I think it was page fifteen.
Yeah, we'd have to fix that later when we get to fifteen, but.
All right.
Uh-huh.
So we're taking out intent in both sections.
That's right, and that's fine too.
Okay. I'm just-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sunny.
I would suggest, since this, I, I agree with Michelle about overthinking this and going a bit too far with the definitions, but the word harmony is what is the question here. And consistent, I think we all agree, is a easy, easier to define. Meeting versus purpose, though, that might be a bit more different. To meet something is a little more to the letter, like to meet exactly. But the purpose can be a little more, give a little more space for the planning commission. So my suggestion would be to say, deny the application if not consistent with the purpose of Section three-twenty, removing and intent because it's redundant.
That's fine with me.
That's fine, yeah.
Kathy's fine, Rich's fine, Deb's fine.
Like to move forward.
I'm just listening, and then I like the conversation, so.
Absolutely. There'll be a couple of these sections we'll spend a lot of time on. Some of them we won't have to spend a lot of time on.
Well, actually, that was something that we spent a lot of time on, do you remember? But, um-
I still didn't come to a conclusion.
No, it's still, it's good to listen because then some of these words, we couldn't, you know, after you go through seventeen pages, you're just like, really, we were all just like-
Done.
We were ready to move on and get some information, and I'm glad it's moving on because it's coming out well for some of these wording that we had issues with.
Any other comments on page five of seventeen?
Yes.
Go ahead, Sunny.
Section F, the applicant or any other person aggrieved, there was a public comment regarding to the word aggrieved, and that it may be limiting to who can appeal. I'd just like to find out how that, if that's true.
I think we, we're trying, here's where we went. Again, we ran out of time. And these were discussions on the first meeting that you guys had us do, and then we had another second meeting after that. Person aggrieved, the suggestion was affected, and we needed to define affected. And that was kind of where the committee was going, I think, at the time, but we didn't have a definition yet of affected. And PJ had one. PJ, do you still have that note on how you define affected? And I don't know if it's the right answer, but it's a good way to kind of start the conversation because person aggrieved, I wasn't, aggrieved was a word that, it's kind of like was with harmony. I wasn't really in agreement, but I didn't know where to go with it either myself.
Sure.
Go ahead, PJ.
One of the reference tools that we use is a planner's dictionary from the National Association for Planners. And this was actually a definition, I believe Travis read during the committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's affected persons. Those owners of record, of real property located within a distance of three hundred feet, including public streets and other right-of-way.
And we could change that to five hundred feet because it could be consistent with the certified mail and stuff too. So I don't know if you want to use that definition, but I thought it was pretty good and a pretty good beginning of where we could go with, if you wanted to use affected.
I just wanted to bring up the question because of the public comment, but when we get to the public comments, perhaps we'll hear more about it then.
And I hope they take some notes so they can give us their thought on that definition as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kathy.
I'd like to hear from PJ or others about what's the, what's the restrictions or the rules that allowable for appeals for other parts of the county ordinance, like conditional use permits as an example? What's the, the rules on appeal?
This is consistent with, with that, five business days after the final action from the planning commission. If it's appealed in writing to our office, then it goes before the board for reconsideration.
So who can, who can make those appeals for conditional use permits?
I'd have to check the exact wording for it.
People who are affected or aggrieved.
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think it'd be good to check and, and try to create some consistency with the, with how it works for the conditional use permits.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I have reviewed the pending amendment to the construction ordinance. I would note that when it's an appeal from a decision, an individual decision of the planning director, that it is the current draft as proposed, which could be amended or changed. But the current draft states that an appeal from the planning director is anyone affected. However, an appeal from the planning commission to the Board of Commissioners is currently, currently reads aggrieved. I would also just note for the benefit of the audience that standing, it, it's a legal concept. It just means, do you have the right to sue? And any appeal from the Board of Commissioners to the circuit court is aggrieved standard. And one of the reasons for that is the, the intent really is to limit the right to sue to someone who's actually injured. The idea is not that every single taxpayer would have standing to file suit in circuit court just because they don't like a decision of the Board of Commissioners. With that being said, whether you use aggrieved or affected, you can provide your own definition. I think some of the concern stems from the quail litigation. And, and in looking at, I think interested individuals were looking at how the Supreme Court defines aggrieved when you have an appeal from the Board of Commissioners to the circuit court. With all that being said, the definition that was just read, within three hundred feet, I would just throw this out, out for consideration to the board, not to complicate matters. But you could arguably be eliminating standing by someone who actually is in fact injured. The idea of aggrieved party is that it's someone who's actually injured by this action or, or a loss of a right. So if you limit it to three hundred feet, you could, in fact, there could be someone who's thousand feet who really have, is injured, so.
So you're saying it shouldn't have a limit, or it should have a limit?
I'm saying just be very careful whether you use aggrieved or affected, how you define, say, at least aggrieved. There's no areas, you know, three hundred feet, five hundred feet. You could be aggrieved a mile away if, if that operation is impacting you and you've suffered injury.
But you also, if you're with, if you're further out, you can still be affected. So that's why I said it's, it's hard to define that, because if you're affected, you could be, it could be air quality or other things that aren't right three hundred feet.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Be careful about how you define affected. If you limit it to three hundred feet or five hundred feet, you might be excluding someone who is in fact affected or injured.
And it's, it's just a suggestion. The other thing is, is that if you're aggrieved, then you might define it so people can't come if they are affected. So what I'm saying is, is if I come up and I file an appeal within five business days and you find that, or the planning commission's decision is not affecting or aggrieving somebody, how do we define that, that they are aggrieved? how do we define that, that they are aggrieved or affected? That's the bottom line here. And that they can come to the next step. Because I'd like people, if they feel that they, this process did not work at the planning commission, that they can still come. That's why aggrieved or affected is a big word. Because if you're telling them they can't and they feel like they have been affected or aggrieved, I don't know what the word or how you get there. How do we make that so they can? Because this is a public process. And they should be able to come from the planning commission if they want to the county commission, which I don't, I don't mind hearing people. And then you make the final decision to say you're not affected or aggrieved.
There are also, PJ Conover provided definitions of aggrieved party. One definition is any person or persons or entity or entities who can demonstrate that their property will be injured by a decision of either the zoning officer or the planning board or zoning board. An owner of land whose property is directly or indirectly affected by the granting or denial of a permit. So there's other definitions of aggrieved that might be more workable for the planning commission.
Well, why they didn't is because when the landowners that were around the mining company on top of the hill there, they said that they weren't aggrieved.
But that was using, that was using a definition provided by the Supreme Court in interpreting the statute dealing with appeals from the Board of Commission to the circuit court. And in fact, what happened in that case is the Supreme Court decided that, well, be that as it may, Pennington County has stated that the standard is affected. So the point being, if we want to use the term aggrieved or affected, either one, it's up to the planning commission, we can provide our own definition of what that means with regards to this ordinance. So you can use aggrieved, but then just define it in a manner that is consistent with your wishes.
Well, and consistent with helping the public for when the next step comes, if it's suing or if it's planning or county board. I would like that somehow to be noted in there. Thank you, honey.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kathy.
You know, one idea or thing to consider is that, you know, maybe we should just leave out the word and just say, you know, any person of Pennington County, for example, because, can appeal it. Because once it gets to the Board of Commissioners, I think that we could trust the board to make a determination rather quickly whether this has merit or not. And if it doesn't have merit, then you can dispense of it how you choose. If it does, then you can deal with that accordingly. So why restrict it at all at this level, knowing that the Board of Commissioners can enact accordingly?
And we have on your decisions. So I understand what you're saying.
However, I'm not sure how that would, I haven't researched the issue. I just know the Supreme Court ultimately accepted the standard in our ordinance. So I don't know if that opens up multiple lawsuits going up to the circuit court from the Board of Commissioners. I don't know the answer to that.
And the other thing to consider is what if that property is right on the edge of a different county and it affects the county north or south of it, but not our individuals in our county? Then they can't appeal it? I mean, it's just a thought process.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't know about that. I mean, that's a good point. But I, I just think that, I mean, to me, the standard, this is different than whether the Board of Commissioners takes it to, you know, the legal, the court system. And that, of course, then there's other considerations. But right here, this is just simply the ability for, you know, a party to take it up to the Board of Commissioners, which I agree, they're publicly elected.
To engage in a public process and understand that they're not just shut down at the, at the planning commission.
That's right.
That's why I do like affected, but I don't like the 300 feet. And I kind of made that clear in the committee. I said, I thought that was kind of, kind of.
That's right. I agree. 300 feet is way, is not nearly, you know, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
It sounds to me, though, that there is a legal definition for aggrieved that's much more accepted than affected. Otherwise, affected would need to then be defined.
Redefined here. I agree with you, Rich. I like aggrieved here.
So I guess I don't, I don't see, I don't see the reason why aggrieved is not an acceptable term for that, for that paragraph.
You know, but to me, the concern of using either term is that then the argument could become about, does this person have standing to go from, to appeal from the planning commission to the Board of Commissioners? And to me, that's the wrong, that's the wrong debate to have at that point. I mean, it should be that that's, you know, who, I just don't think we should deny somebody the right to appeal this because we are, you know, you know, with, because we are trying to evaluate this definition of aggrieved. And it, you know, it makes the decision, then, does this fit or not? Well, who makes that decision, whether the person really is aggrieved or not?
Got you, Kathy. Does anyone want to make it, Rich, you are okay with aggrieved?
I think that we leave it the way that it is and we listen to the comments from the, from the public.
Lori? Do you have a comment on that? Do you have a comment on the term aggrieved versus affected?
No, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. Sonny?
I'd just like to get back to that. What we've been saying is that we don't want to limit people's ability to appeal, but we don't have a specific definition for aggrieved. Like Rich said, maybe we just leave it for now. And maybe when we get to the public comment, we'll see if there's any reason to change it.
Deb, do you have a preferred definition of aggrieved right in front of you that you would like there?
Well, it says aggrieved, but I like some of it, but not, and owner land, the owner of land whose property is directly or indirectly affected by granting or denial of a permit or variance under this ordinance. Is it affected or aggrieved? I don't. I like taking this out completely, like, but I like public process and I don't know how that would affect the next step. Because I think people should have that due process. But I don't know how to get there and to be fair. And to me, Kathy, makes sense, so.
I mean, one example would be, like, you know, just going, the example on the crows is that, let's say you drive on Highway 16 three, four times a day. Well, you could be, you wouldn't be a property owner, but to me, you'd still, should, you would be certainly affected or aggrieved or, you know, but it's not, these definitions talk about property ownership. And there's other aspects about that. So rather than get bogged down and saying, well, are you, do you have standing or not to make this appeal? It should be, there should be a very low barrier.
And Travis, if you read, it says, "The appeal shall be writing and filed with the planning director within five days of the planning commission decision." And then it also says, "In the event of an appeal, the planning director shall present the planning commission's decision to the county board for review. The county board shall vote, uphold, overhaul, amend, decision of the planning commission." So that still gives you due process. You can, the planning director will, again, like Kathy said, bring it to us. If we don't agree, we do it all the time to you guys. So you can bring it to us whether you appealed or not, and we can still not uphold your decision.
Right. PJ, do you have input?
Yeah, just to get back to Commissioner Johnson's question from before, with a couple minor adjustments, it's almost word for word in the existing appeals process for conditional use permits in section 500C.
So the word aggrieved is in the.
Yes, ma'am.
Additional use?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's kind of what we talked about this morning, that, you know, if the operation was in wall and you lived in Keystone, you still had that opportunity.
Because you could make the case you're aggrieved. Has the issue ever come up that somebody doesn't have standing to appeal it because they're not aggrieved?
I don't think I've ever heard of it never being able to be appealed.
Okay. All right.
So what are we doing? All that conversation?
I actually, I mean, I get some satisfaction with knowing that this is consistent with, you know, these other ordinances. And if aggrieved is the word that's used and the issue's not, you know, that, you know, laboring that definition isn't becoming an issue and that it's a very low bar. If that's the practice, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Any further input?
I'll listen to the public, so.
Okay. So at this point, we're not changing it. We'll see if there's any further input. Any further comments on five of 17 before we move to six of 17?
Yes. Hi.
Hi, Gary.
Jerry Irvin, Administrative Assistant for the Planning Department. Under the public hearing where it has that twice within 30 days.
Oh, yes. We forgot about this.
I'd like to recommend to change that to, it's the same language, once a week for two successive weeks prior to the hearing. And this language is consistent with the language for, I do the advertisements and stuff, language consistent in our zoning ordinance for, like, rezones, planning unit developments, ordinance amendments.
Ms. Jerry, I guess, where are you, where are you at?
Okay.
Two public hearing?
Public hearing. Where it says twice within 30 days.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jerry.
Yeah, I got it, yep. Okay.
She just brought the wording in line with what's already out there.
Yes. No, I just ignored it, sorry. Sorry, Travis.
So I can go ahead and change it over here.
Does anyone have concerns about that? In the committee, it was, originally it was just 10 days. There was some discussion. I suggested bringing it out to 30 days, but working within the terminology and the deadlines and all that kind of stuff, this is appropriate language to give it so that there's multiple notifications.
Mr. Chair, would it be okay to just have her type that in exactly how she wants it and we can review it that way?
Yeah.
Yep, I'm good with that.
The only change that this would have really in our office, except for the extra advertising, would be that the applications would be due earlier than they are now. But really, not much of a change in our end.
How much further?
Probably look in about two months before your first hearing. Right now, we're looking at six weeks for rezones because that is the one that requires the most advertising. So if we're doing this with, depending on how you approve it, it could be up to eight weeks.
So moving from six weeks to eight weeks.
Essentially, give or take.
Okay. And she's typing it up there right now, real quick, so we can see the wording. Does that look good?
That means it will, because I have a, I track my advertisements, that I do. And that just means that it will be advertised two weeks in a row. Yeah.
Okay.
And at least 10 days prior to the hearing.
All right, anything further? Moving on to page six of 17. Any questions, comments, or concerns on page six?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Just looking at section two, which begins on page six, which is a list of things that are required for the permit, for the mining permit application. I think it's missing something. And I think that's the requirement to submit the reclamation plan. And the reclamation plan is addressed in another section, but it doesn't specifically say that it needs to be part of the mining permit application. So we can talk about this and we get to that page, which is page eight, I believe. But just in concept, I believe that the requirement to submit the reclamation plan needs to be part of the mining permit application.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
And then, so that's, that's that. But then, I'm a little mixed up on B, which is agency comments. It states that all comments received from federal, state, and/or tribal agency in response to an application for a mining license or permit concerning the property that is subject to the current application. So, I mean, how can the responses that they receive to something be submitted when they submit it?
I believe that refers to the responses from state permits.
Yes.
So.
Okay, so maybe that could be in addition, an application for a state mining or license, a state license or permit.
Mining license, we don't do, so.
That's right.
But if you want to put state, that's fine.
I think that would, would help, would help. I think it would make it more clear.
State mining license.
Yeah, state or mining license or permits from the state of South Dakota or something to ensure that the understanding is that this is, and this is discussing the comments, the responses that they receive from their state license or permit. Go before, go before mining license, Jerry.
We do mining licenses. I don't think state, am I correct, doesn't have permits. We're doing the permits.
They do, they have both, they have mining permits and licenses. Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Brittany Molliter, Environmental Planning Supervisor. My suggestion would be, because we're not addressing minerals under section 320, that you take out the word or permit because it would only be the South Dakota mining license that would be applicable.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. Makes sense. Does that look good? Does that kind of meet your intent?
Yes, yes.
All right. Any other comments, or do we want to go back to your?
We can get to that when I get to the.
Anybody else for page six of 17? Page seven of 17.
I have one comment.
One comment for, okay.
On item seven, I guess it is V double I. Are we on the next page, or did I skip?
We're on seven.
Okay. I think that this, there should be a, an additional requirement here to identify locations of wells outside the boundary, the permit boundary. And this is not an onerous task because these wells are all listed in the database that the state maintains. And I just think it would be, be helpful in reviewing this, these, these operating, you know, plans if we understood, is the water being used, you know, nearby, outside? And it's not a big task, it's a simple thing. And so I don't know, I mean, perhaps, you know, water within a, within one mile or half a mile or whatever it might be. But I think there needs to be a requirement for some wells identified, the location of them outside of the mine boundary.
We had a lot of discussion on this, Travis, but I think maybe Brian, can you, was that you or Danielle? That you're, the, one of our advisors was Danielle, but Brian was on our committee. Why was that? I remember on why the location, location of wells on site, both existing and proposed within the five year. Can you tell me, again, Ms. Kathy, what you wanted it within?
I just think it needs to include wells outside the proposed, you know, the mine boundary, you know, to some distance, and we can define that distance. And the reason for this is because I think in reviewing these, it's, it's an important piece of information to have, that is the water being used, you know, right outside of this mine boundary or not? Or is it in some location where there are no wells? Or it's just, to me, an important piece of information and could easily be obtained.
Brian Tiedemann with Pete Lean and Sons sat on the committee. The reason that we didn't add that in, and PJ can actually comment on this too, but we saw it as somewhat redundant because later on, within the process here, we are requiring that you go out and look at wells within 1,500 feet of the permit limit. So it was mostly due to redundancy.
But then, I mean, I guess I don't see redundancy because here you're just simply saying, these are where the wells are. Back a few pages, when you go out and do some, you know, monitoring of them, you can select from the set that you've identified here to determine which ones you're going to be monitoring or not. So this is just simply, you know, an identification piece. So I don't, I guess I don't really understand the redundancy part.
Okay. Yeah, and that's a fair point. Like I said, we're, later on, within this application, we are required to go out and look for those wells.
Right.
And present information on those wells.
Right.
If you would like to have it in both places, really, that's up to you.
Yeah.
So you'd be repeating it, is basically, we didn't, we didn't discount. We just figured it was repeated in, what, I forgot what page we did. Page 12.
You're referring to the groundwater monitoring section?
Yes, so it, there's a whole section on groundwater monitoring, so they are more informed. You know, if you're not getting, maybe on number seven. But if you wanted to make it repetitive, I mean, I don't see it being consistent. Meaning if that helps commissioners, planning commissioners, or people that are not understanding the groundwater and that that's part of the application and how that comes together, you can make it consistent and say it again.
Yeah, as I said, I just really don't, I think it serves two different purposes. This is just simply saying there's, and put them on the map, of course, but is there one well out there? Is there 10 wells out there? Is, you know, what, just to get a sense of the water usage. And that, to me, that's very different than saying, okay, now we're going to select these wells to do our testing. And so I would like to see it added. I don't think it's an onerous addition. And way to word that in language, I mean. And, and way to word that in language, I mean, there's a couple ways of doing it, but one would be to make a separate section, you know, V triple I, or we could just, within this, within this one, location of wells on site and within five hundred feet or, or a thousand feet or whatever.
We put fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred feet.
Yes, ma'am.
Outside the boundary, both existing and proposed, although proposed would be very different. You wouldn't know which ones would be proposed.
Or you could just, this is number seven on groundwater monitoring, and you could refer to groundwater monitoring seven A as well, so.
But see, that brings up another point, is that this groundwater monitoring, is that required to be part of the, the application? It isn't, is it?
Thank you, Brian.
So this is, this won't have been done. The groundwater monitoring will be done after the application is submitted.
They have to do it through the state, if I'm correct. Do they, and, no?
So I think this is, this groundwater monitoring would be based, if, if they get the per, if they get the permit, then they would go out and do groundwater monitoring. So what we're requiring for this in section two, which is the mine permit application, they would, that, that's before the groundwater monitoring effort. Isn't that right?
Danielle, you were advisor, maybe you could answer some of that.
Danielle Weavers with Pete Lean and Sons. We did discuss it. As far as the location of the wells, it is important. The reason we didn't include it in here is because it is public information and staff felt that they could access that information and see where those registered wells were within South Dakota and decide which ones they'd like to speak to the landowners about monitoring at that point. So we left it more open to the staff so they could use their judgment as, to decide which ones we wanted to monitor, which ones were closes, which ones were being used. Some of them probably actually aren't even used. They're just old wells that are sitting out there, too. So that's truly why we had pulled it off here. I know at one time we had it up to fifteen hundred feet. We were a little concerned with some of the smaller mining operations. For some of the larger operations, it's not a big deal to pull that layer in and put it onto our mining maps. For some of the smaller ones that are dealing with much smaller footprints, mapping isn't a technology that they have readily available, but the staff felt that they could do that for them. So that's all.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Sonny.
I would offer a suggestion for this issue. We have later on groundwater monitoring, the wells will be identified at that point. But could we add to this section after location of wells on site, including wells designated for monitoring?
Good question.
Or are the wells to be designated for monitoring going to come later so you wouldn't know that yet?
PJ?
Just for clarification, the ground watering on page twelve, it says, the word may is in there, and that's from the planning commission. The planning director at the time of the application has a discretion to require additional information that's not listed in this ordinance. So we have, I have a little bit more freedom with that. But this section, ground watering, applies to the planning commission requiring additional may require.
So the planning director can do, we can ask for more as the planning, or you guys can ask for more as planning commission. Remember, you can always add more to it if that's not sufficient enough, if there's more interest or there's more issues with it. Instead of requiring the small company and the big company to do the same thing when they, you know, I think.
This is the one part I was talking about.
You have people that are on ag land, too. So some of this is, that's why we put it as something different. Danielle was right. How we do the monitoring, if that needs to change, that's up to you. But I think, are, are you saying the distance and the?
Yeah.
The data needs to be different than what's on there?
Yeah, I guess what, what I'm saying is that, to me, this is just really independent of groundwater monitoring. Because one, the groundwater monitoring, and PJ just pointed this out, it's, it's a may. They don't necessarily need to do this groundwater monitoring because it says may require, which is fine. But this is just basic information as to whether there's a lot of groundwater usage near the mine site or not. And, and I don't even think sophisticated, it takes sophisticated mapping. If your mine site is, you know, in this, in this, you know, quarter, quarter, quarter section or something, you know, just, you know, do an approximation, go to the state website, download the locations of those wells. It's, it, you know, it's not intended to be a real complicated deal. It's just to provide, it's just kind of straightforward information. And it's, and, and so I, and I don't know how to make it, how to write it in here, so that, to make it so that it's, doesn't, I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be. But it's just, you know, just simple, straightforward information.
Okay.
I, I see and agree with that point, but because fifteen hundred feet is cited in the ground monitoring, groundwater monitoring section, perhaps then locations of wells on site, including those within fifteen hundred feet?
Yes, I agree with that.
I like what she's got written up there right now.
Uh-huh.
That's already.
PJ, you have some input to this?
Yeah, just one point that came up during the committee meeting is the possibility of adding the word recorded wells. There could be a lot of wells that are dug illegally that aren't known about.
And that's, and that's fine.
Yeah.
Put recorded in there.
I'd say recorded is.
Could we put it in the ordinance then, please?
Yeah.
Recorded? Thank you.
Of recorded wells on site and within fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah, and that's fine.
So how does that sound to everyone on the?
Fine with me.
I feel like there's a different word for recorded. The D N R has a, a well database, but is it a?
Registered?
Registered.
Registered, okay. Registered.
So you, you're simply saying that you'd go to the D N R website, pull up the map page, have all the well dots on there, hit the print button, and submit that with your application? Is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
And the intent of your request is to understand what the relative water usage is adjacent to the?
That's right.
Mine permit request?
That's right.
Great. Anything further?
That's good.
All right. Anything else on seven of seventeen? Moving on to eight of seventeen. Any comments, concerns, addressing any items there?
Chairman, this is where I think reclamation plan, which is sec, item four, needs to be moved up above three, and it needs to be a component of the mining permit application. I mean, I think that there needs, when we receive, when, not we, when the staff receives a mine permit application for their evaluation, the reclamation plan needs to be in there.
Okay. I know we talked a lot about this in the committee, too, if I remember correct, Deb.
I, I'm not understanding the.
It's all the same, it's all the same section of application. So I, I guess I don't, I'm not getting it because it's number four on application.
Right.
But it isn't. I mean, section two clearly says this, the applicant shall submit the following documents with the mining permit application. And it's one, two.
The application.
Three, four, five, six.
Commissioner Lester? It's, all of this is under section G, which is mining permit application. It's all under the application requirement.
Those one, two, three, three, six are all required.
Then I think that, then that, then section four should specifically say, what, where does this, where do, why do they have to do this? Mining application.
On page six, section G begins mining permit application, so that's all of section G.
Ultimately, they have to have all of this.
So they got to submit everything with one, everything with two, everything with three, everything with four, number five's missing, and everything with six.
But I do understand a concern if, if one person who's used to reading ordinances doesn't see it, maybe people who aren't used to it can't see it. So if there is something, maybe we can make it a little more clear. All of section G applies, maybe?
Just look at, if you look at three, drainage and erosion control is obviously going to be required, and that's at three. It's not up in this area, too. So just look at that as it's a mandatory requirement.
But, right, but this, this isn't a document, the drainage and erosion control permits. I mean, they are, but they're not documents prepared by the applicant. The reclamation plan, in my mind, is a document prepared by the applicant in the same way that an operations plan is, in the same way that a site plan is.
Guess I'm not, I'm not understanding, but.
And you want to have any other inputs on that? Brittany, are you wanting to say something? Maybe to clarify?
I understand what Kathy's saying, and I think it could be applicable under either as item instead of, or after operation plan, then have your reclamation plan, and then number three, and then five, four and five, and then, I mean, I, I, I see both.
Either way, it's going to be covered, correct?
Yes, I think it's just under, if you had it as section E, you would almost have to bullet out what you would want in a reclamation plan. I think this is just saying that one is required. In the other sections, the way that they're bulleted out, it, it's very specific as to what applies to an operation plan or a site plan, which in four, it's just a general statement about a reclamation plan. So I guess that's kind of the, the difference. It's more of a formatting type of thing.
Could it, would you feel better, instead of rewriting and kind of moving and adjusting, if G on page six of seventeen said mining permit application, items one through six are mandatory?
No. I, I would. I mean, item one through six.
Or five, I'm sorry, five.
I want through.
It'll end up being five because of the way.
Well.
Or do you just want to take the reclamation paragraph and move it up as item, it would be X, but item ten underneath the operation plan?
Yeah, I, I see that.
Well, that would work, too.
Yeah, I think that's better.
Yep.
Yep. Just something to make it very clear that this needs to be part of the package that gets submitted.
And that people have a clear understanding of where they're going. So if that's a little bit clearer, then I don't, I don't see it being a problem.
And I, and I think that's a fine suggestion, moving it as, as the last item under the operation plan.
I'm okay with it.
Good.
And then, did you note that, Jerry, that there's no five?
Okay. All right, any further comments, concerns with this? All right, that moves us to page nine of seventeen. Any thoughts? No one on nine of seventeen? All right, ten of seventeen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori.
Sorry, I had one comment about page nine.
Okay, go ahead.
Under H three dust control, in the second sentence, I think you're missing an and. The operator shall use industry best management practice in an effort to control and minimize.
Okay. Jerry, do you see that? Second line.
Second sentence.
Second sentence. Right there, back up.
Thank you.
Nope, not there. Back a couple of words to the left.
Before the word and.
She said and.
There you go. And and effort. All right, any further comments on nine? Ten of seventeen. Any comments you want to address, any concerns? All right, eleven of seventeen. Any comments or concerns?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I had one comment on page eleven. Let me find it. It's on, where did I see that? There's a place where I think, oh, it's in, we added some information about scale, scale distance on the air blast. And I think you want, you have an equal there instead of a, just a dash. D equals distance from blast.
Oh.
It, it was where it defined the terms for that calculation.
Right above three, yeah, there we go. I think Jerry got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Any other items for eleven of seventeen? Twelve of seventeen. Any thoughts, comments, or concerns to be addressed?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rich?
I'm going to try to beat Lori here on some correct, grammar corrections here. Under exceptions, this is the maximum ground vibrations and air blast standards shall not apply to property owned by the permittee, instead of owner by the permittee? Should that be a D?
You have that, Jerry?
And then on that same EE topic, is the paragraph below it just kind of like an explanation? It's kind of, it's like it's explaining what, what, what that will do.
Deb, do you remember why that was put in there?
No, I don't remember putting that in there. Michelle, did you put that in there? I don't remember us putting this in.
No, I simply reviewed the document after it was drafted. I didn't make any substantive changes. I just made kind of edits in terms of.
Danielle, maybe, Danielle maybe can explain it because some of this stuff, we used Danielle as one of the consultants because we didn't understand some of the stuff on here.
Danielle with Pete Lean and Sons. Um, that actually was part of the comment that I had submitted. Alls I, alls I had asked to be added was the maximum ground vibration and air blast standards shall not apply to property owned by the permittee. That part down there, I think they just grabbed it when they moved my comment over to add it back in. So, yeah, so it can come out. It was just an explanation.
Okay, that makes better sense then.
Thank you.
Good catch, Rich. Any other comments?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Um, you know, under this ground model monitoring, I, I want to be clear that I understand this. Is this, so the planning commission, that we, we may require the applicant to perform baseline testing on up to three wells located outside. Is this envisioned to be like a condition that we would put on a approved permit? Let's say we approve the permit with the condition that they do testing on these three wells or, you know, one well, two wells, three wells? Is this, is that how this is envisioned to be?
Ms. Brittany, can you, and, and why we added this? Because it's, we usually, do we usually require water testing and different things? We usually use D N R through things, but the, the committee and the public wanted us to add a little bit more to our ordinance, so this is where this came about.
Correct. And you're correct, it would also, you put it in as a condition.
It would, yeah.
If you were to approve it.
Uh-huh.
Also, in, on page thirteen of nineteen, sorry, Commissioner, there's nineteen pages, section seven B, it says the testing results, and they have to all be completed prior to the, being, the operation being commenced, so it's all.
Right. So this would happen between the time that we approved the permit with a condition to do this and before they were, any activity would start.
Right.
Yep.
That's the intent.
Okay. And, and then, but in addition to any condition that we put on it in terms of well testing, if a property owner, a nearby property owner requested in writing and so on, then the applicant would, or that, in those, in that case, it would be a permit holder, would be required to test those additional wells. Is that right?
I don't know about required.
The applicant shall be responsible for baseline testing, so responsible isn't required?
Well, I'm saying back to the planning commission, may require.
Right, but so.
I don't know if any landowner.
But look at the second half of that.
They could.
Ms. Kathy, I think.
They can? That's the intent? Okay.
Yeah, where the property owners requested. I think there's another side of this also in, you know, during the application review process by this body, if a property owner came in front of you and was concerned with their groundwater in the area, it would give you guys some latitude to request this baseline testing and then not even approve the application until review or consideration of that information. So I think that's another facet of this requirement. So I, I think there, it, it could be taken both ways. And I think that's why that allows a property owner, that if they request it and they say that they have a well on their property and they would like it tested because they are, you know, concerned about, you know, a potential impact to it, that that gives this, this body some latitude to take that into consideration in their review of the application. So that's my understanding of this section two, so I guess it could be taken either.
I'm not sure that that.
I'm not sure that that is, that it's clear that it really means that. I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with your interpretation, but I would have a hard time knowing that by reading this.
Oh, well.
Do you have any suggested language?
Well, I mean, I, so I guess my first question would be, the second part of that, starting, "The applicant shall be responsible for baseline well testing for up to these three wells where the property owners have requested in writing." I mean, is that, would, so, I mean, to me, it doesn't make much sense to do this kind of testing unless there's a permit in hand. There wouldn't be any reason to do this. And so to do it beforehand, before we actually approve the permit application, that doesn't really make any sense to me.
Ms. Danielle, do you have, you're used to going through this process.
I guess, process-wise, I was looking at it a little bit different than Brittany. The way I kind of saw it is, when this comes before the planning commission, and you guys are looking at the plan, and you have public comment, if there are neighbors nearby that had concerns with what the mining was actually going to do to their property, you guys would have the latitude to go ahead and say, "Okay, we want to have you baseline test these nearest wells close to you. Therefore, if that neighbor ever came back in the near future after mining has begun, if, once the permit's received, you would have the baseline test, and you would also have the authority to ask the mining company to go back out there and take another test to compare to that baseline, to see if any effects had actually happened on that well." So that was the intent of what we had put in here for it. So you're absolutely right. It wouldn't do any good to do it before the application. You would really need the input from the public to decide where you're going to test and what you're going to do with that information.
And do you envision it being done, if, let's say, you applied for a permit, and the permit, and you hadn't, the planning commission was still considering it, I mean, would you go, would that request be made by the planning commission to go out and test these wells, measure these things? Would it be done in advance of granting the permit?
Not in advance of granting the permit, but it'd be done as a condition that it be completed before mining.
That's right.
And it also gives you the latitude that if you're out mining in the middle of six sections where no one else is around, that maybe no one's there that even wants you to test water, because there's no wells in the area, too.
So, so the second, second, second part of this, "The applicant shall be responsible for baseline testing," is that really, should we really take this literally, or is it really the, that the, these property owners make a suggestion to the planning commission, and then the planning commission makes the requirement as a condition of the permit?
Yeah, the planning commission would make the requirement. I think them being responsible comes down to the cost aspect of it. So the mining company would be responsible for the cost involved on that baseline testing for the three, and that's why we limited it to the three, because you could get way out of hand with testing if you didn't limit it to something there.
Okay, I see. Well, you know, to me, a simpler way of looking at this would be to simply state very clearly that, you know, that the planning commission could, as a condition to the, an approved permit, require the applicant to perform this testing. We can make that clear. And that, and so it's only three, that we would, we could up to three, and that we could take input from local property owners to select those three. I mean, isn't that really what we'd be doing?
Yeah, I think that's a fair interpretation of it. We took our best shot at wording it. Whatever makes sense to the planning commission is probably the better way to word it. So if you guys have something else.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for helping me understand it.
Anyone have any wording suggestions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Cheryl Rowe. I have just a couple suggestions in this part, that I like the idea that you have a baseline before you grant the permit. And also, if they do have complaints and come back, that the testing would be by a third party, not the company that's doing the mining, and that they would test for not just bacteria turbidity and drawdown, but would also test for heavy metals. Thanks.
Okay. I believe third party is in there.
Yep.
Item C.
Yep, yeah. So Jerry. Good suggestion, so.
Good suggestion. Thank you very much.
Jerry, if you go back to that first, I would recommend saying, "Based on site-specific conditions, the planning commission," no, 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 go back to your first sentence. A. "Based on site-specific conditions, the planning commission as, oh, yeah, okay, as a, a condition of a, of a permit, or to a permit, to the approval of a permit, or however you, the proper words are there, and then it, but may require mining permit." Require, and then continue on, the applicant, you know, which you've already got there. Yep.
May require the applicant. And then, and now, to me, the second part of this is that this is just, this isn't, this isn't additional three wells. This is just input for the planning commission to select which three wells. It will be based upon input from the property owners, because it's not, we're not talking about six wells, we're just talking about three. And, do you understand what I'm saying? Is that, this is the, the, it's the planning commission that's going to take under advisement requests made by local landowners about testing their wells. I mean, I would just say, in, you know, the planning commission, in the, in the selection, or in the selection of the three wells, the planning commission will, will, will utilize or use, or, you know, take it, take suggestion from these local landowners that request in writing and so on. But, because it's the same, that's just, I mean, that's how we're going to make the selection of, one, is there going to be any wells, and if it is, which What do you think, PJ?
Jay.
Just to be fair, if I understand, if I remember the committee correctly, the intent was actually six wells. Three possible from the planning commission, three additional from the public. So I just wanted to make that clear, that that was my interpretation.
Okay.
I didn't want to shortchange anyone.
Okay, well, if that's the, I mean, I don't object to six wells, but I, I just didn't understand it that way. So let's make it clear then. So scratch that, Jerry.
Hold on, hold on.
It, what, no, it wasn't, it was only three wells. I don't remember having discussion on six wells. It was three wells.
Because in the committee, there was that discussion. It looked like there was a set of six, three and three, and we got it clarified to being just three, not three and three. That's the way I remember it.
I don't remember the extra three.
Commissioner, are you, are you trying to state that you want the landowners to pick which wells, the three wells, or they will make suggestions to the planning commission, and the planning commission picks the three wells?
That's right. For example, let's say that there's five wells out there in that, in that area, and the decision's made by the planning commission to put a condition on there as that the, that the mine, the permit holder should test three wells. Well, to make the, to make the selection of those five wells, which three will be tested, if one, if, if, if one or more of those wells came forth from a landowner that was concerned, and wrote a letter, and said, "We'd like our well tested, and we grant access for that testing," then that would provide information to the planning commission that, you know, that they may or may not select that well, but it'd provide input.
I understand where you're going, but I don't know if that's quite the wording that needs to be on there. Because I, I think it's a good idea if the landowners around it are going to be affected. I just, again, I don't know how to get there.
Especially if you have five landowner, or five different wells from five different landowners, and they all five say, "I want mine done."
Yeah, and it's five different.
And we only get three.
Well, but then there's, I mean, then we look, have to look at it and saying, well, these are, this is, these are the best three because of its, their location, or the depths, or, you know, whatever the other parameters might be.
How would we know that?
Well, it should be in the, the, the mining permit application. Those wells would be located, and then the depths are, I mean, we, I'm not suggesting that the depths have to be put on an application, but it's something that's easily accessible through these well logs at the state, and look at the depths. I mean, there's other information that we could get.
You have to figure out who is affected and who is not.
Well, of the five, I mean, that's just a scenario, but, you know, which ones might be the most relevant, yes.
But, no, I see where you're going, Ms. Kathy. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm saying that's a great idea. I just don't know.
How to word it?
Right. Maybe.
Aren't the, "The applicant shall be responsible for baseline well testing of up to three wells located on adjacent land where the property owners have requested in writing and grant permission for access and testing on their property." It seems to me like the landowners are already making that request to planning commission. Planning commission is saying, yes, as a condition of approval, that these, that you'll have to go test these and get baseline testing. I think it's, I think your questions are, I think it's written answering your.
Questions.
Your questions.
Well, if I were to read this without this discussion, I would say, is it the same, you know, is it three wells or six wells?
Says three.
I know, but it says three in two different places, so.
The words "in addition" were crossed out.
Yeah, "in addition" was removed, so it didn't seem like, "In addition, the applicant shall be responsible for testing of up to three more wells." It just says, "Three wells", referring back to the initial three.
Is there a reason why it's, why that has to be repeated in both paragraphs, "Up to three wells"?
Suddenly, that you're kind of going down the road, I just started thinking myself. You know, maybe I should say, "Applicant to perform baseline testing, located within 1,500 feet of the proposed perimeter," and then you annotate the three wells in the second sentence. So striking baseline testing of wells.
I think I would leave the wells in the first sentence and get rid of the three in the second.
I'm okay with either one, whatever makes the most sense, to make it clear. Kathy, does that sound?
I do think it would help to get rid of the three in the second paragraph.
We're going to take the three out of the second paragraph. Let's word the, let's word that so it doesn't look like there's added.
Um.
"Applicant to perform baseline testing of wells, grant their property baseline." The way it's written up there, I think that's kind of what we're getting at, right?
Um, it's, I guess what I'm struggling with is that the first paragraph, it's very clear that this is a condition that the planning commission puts on the approval of the permit.
The second one, it sounds to me like the relationship is between the mine, the permit holder, and the adjacent landowners, and somehow the planning commission is out, is not involved. And that's really not the case.
So Brittany, do you have any input on this paragraph that would be helpful, since you do a lot of the water quality and different things? Are we, I know you were in our meetings with us, so is there anything that you see that could be changed that, to see where we're trying to go with this, is basically that the landowners have a voice in this?
Correct. And I think the second sentence is really, all it's really saying is that those wells within the 1,500 feet, those landowners have to grant you permission to do it. I think that's basically what that is saying in a lot of words. You know, I, because you're saying that it has to be located within that 1,500 feet, so if you have six wells, the landowners of those six wells would have to request in writing, and then the planning commission would have to pick which three, essentially is what you're asking for.
That's right.
I'm just thinking that's really wordy and not saying that. It's confusing.
I have some proposed wording here. You want to go ahead? So, "Based on the site-specific conditions, the planning commission may require the applicant to perform baseline testing of up to three wells located within 1,500 feet of the proposed perimeter of the mining extraction area on," and then I would skip all the way to "wells," "on wells located on adjacent land where property owners have requested in writing."
Did you get that, Jerry? Looking at it like, what?
I think that's a real improvement.
Does that solve?
That's a real improvement. Okay. Right, now you're going to have to, or Rich, sorry.
Is that what we're looking at then?
So go all the way to mining extraction area, and "in addition" you have crossed out. I would get rid of the period and put the word "on," and then get rid of the second paragraph, all the way to "wells."
Much better.
Extraction area.
Oh, that's my quick.
Any further, any further thoughts on this paragraph? Does that look, does that meet the intent that we're trying to get at, or at least closer to it?
Yeah, I do, I just want one other question. I think drawdown's the wrong word. I think you don't test drawdown. You do tests, and then you calculate drawdown. And to me, it should be water level. Brittany, do you have anything? I can't remember the debate on drawdown or what, but can you tell us?
I remember Mr. Tiedemann had a really good explanation for drawdown. I don't mean to call him out, but I know, during the committee meeting, he had a good explanation to continue to use that.
Okay, Brian. Actually, there was people from the audience, and Brian, that were debating a guy that was actually in mining for many years as well. Actually, he wasn't in mining, he just knew a lot about mining, so.
The comment that I had was just that drawdown is a bit more scientific than just measuring water level, and considering the fact that three wells within 1,500 feet could be into different aquifers altogether, they might not be performing the same way, and you've got to take into account drought conditions as well. So drawdown really tests the performance of each well, whereas water level could be impacted by a lot of different things.
So are you really suggesting you're going to do pump tests out here?
If, if that's what's requested of the planning commission, we see that as a better way of ensuring we're getting good data versus just water level.
I mean, so the way that I envision this is that your baseline, you do a base, this is before you commence operations. So you go and you do a baseline, which would just be water levels. And then, at some point during operations, if there's a concern that there's well, well levels are changing, and, and the concern is that it could be due to the operations, then, then, you know, that's when you'd go out and make the, you know, make the expense of actually doing pump tests, to really see if the pumping you're doing at the wealth, the mine site could be affecting these wells. But you're, you're thinking, you're going to do pump tests for the baseline conditions?
Again, I think water level could be affected by a lot of different things, and drawdown is something that you could measure before and after, and you'd have something very comparable to go off of.
So where would you do the pumping? You'd do the pumping, where would be your pumping well?
I guess, kind of depends on the conditions you're faced with there. And it also depends on if you're actually going to be doing a well on your mine site or not. One of the concerns from the public is that the mining activity, not, not just pulling water for dust control, is going to be what affects the wells. So we may not be even, even talking about a well that we're utilizing on the mine site. It's more as to the public's concern about how we're affecting the aquifer with blasting or other activities. Kathy, the, if a drawdown test is being done, the water level test would be done at the same time anyways?
Oh, it would, for sure, yes. I, I just, I guess, to me, it's a very expensive, complicated process to do those pump tests, when I just thought some simple water levels would do. And I understand that they could be for a variety of reasons, but nonetheless, you'd have a baseline as to where you started to determine if there was any concern, you know, down the road, so.
Yeah, again, if the three wells were all in the same aquifer, Yeah, a, again, um, if the three wells were all in the same aquifer and had similar conditions, that would be really easy to go and say, compare those three wells and say, okay, they're all, they're all adjusting the same because of something. You know, you could look at drought conditions or whatever, but, you know, are we willing to gamble that they're all gonna be the same? They're probably not. There's a lot of different wells out there.
So I think then that this needs to be really a little more clarity then. Because this is baseline now we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, post operations here. So it just seems to me that it should say that, and, okay, so, I mean, you actually do a measurement for bacteria and turbidity and but drawdown is a procedure. This says may though, so it say you may require drawdown and you may require more. So it specifically says as a condition, this may be required, so maybe if it's something that doesn't need measuring of drawdown, what he's saying is that you may or may not decide that you wanted to do that depending on what that effect is.
Yeah, but I guess my point is that it needs to, since it's not, drawdown isn't a simple test. It's a procedure. It's, and you need, I think that should be saying, and a, you know, a pump test to determine drawdown or, you know, or something to make it, because when I read this, I just, I couldn't imagine that that's what you'd really be wanting to do.
I can't say that we, as a mining.
I don't think they want to.
I think they're protecting, he's the one that, uh, the mining company came up with this, so, um, why they're doing this because the concerns are people thinking of the drawdown. So, um, in, in this case, that's why I said we had good committee men, members, because we needed other people from mining companies, the other thing, because we don't know. We also took in consideration what they thought and, um, drawdown, this was something that, if people were concerned about it, they wanted to make sure um, that that was met. So I thought that was pretty awesome that they, you know, it might be something they have to do. But if that's gonna, um, make their permit not go through, it could be a condition for us to do that to suffice in the company to suffice the public.
Okay.
It's just, it's not, I mean, to me though, this sentence still isn't quite right and, and I'll, I'll let it go, but it's, you just, you don't, you don't really measure drawdown. You, you do, but you do, you do a procedure in order to, to make that measurement and I just, I don't think it's real clear, but it's fair enough.
Thank you, Brian.
And Ms. Kathy, you can bring that forward, because this is not done.
Right.
So that, that might be helpful.
Yeah.
All right, any further comments on twelve of seventeen? Go ahead, Sunny.
Uh, I understand, uh, during the committee, the up to three wells was determined to not be in undue burden if you don't want to have to test twenty wells. But this is based on the perimeter of the, uh, mining extraction area and that perimeter may vary depending on the situation, correct? I don't know how much of a variance, but that, that might be, but is three wells for all cases appropriate? Or I'm thinking if you have, like Deb mentioned earlier, you have five landowners around, then only three of them get a chance.
So it's up, up to three wells.
Yes, so is there, would there be an alternative way to say how many wells based on the perimeter? Based on how large of an extraction area we're talking about?
I, I don't know.
That could be difficult, but I thought it'd be worth mentioning, uh, three wells may not be enough if it's a very large operation.
Brittany?
I do have a comment, because I think that in the beginning, under the application, the permit area is established.
Right.
And if that permit area changes, then it's a reapplication. So I think that's established. So I don't know if that would apply without having to go through the reapplication process. So then it would come back up that you may have to do alternative wells in that reapplication process, because your permit area changed.
Changed.
Well, I just mean the initial permit area, rather than.
Right, the initial permit area will be, because if you, in the beginning, and, and I know that this was talked about pretty extensively about what the permit area is going to be, um, that this would apply to that permit area and then, and if it ever changes, then it would be a reapplication and I think everything would.
He's saying if the permit area is six miles, or not six miles, but you know what I'm saying, if it was big.
Right, and there may be some that are going to be. The permit area may be, what, during the application periods.
So tell us, is three wells within that permit area, there could be twenty people in that perimeter that might be affected? And maybe, maybe not, because it might, because it's ag, there might be only two landowners, but I don't, I see where you're going.
I think that's a situational question. It would be hard to apply that in every situation without actually being in the situation.
The Planning Commission can make some recommendations in that.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's situational. I think you could run into.
Sunny, do you have better wording or do you have something to add that would be?
Oh, I just, maybe off the top of my head, for example, if, uh, if you had more than three landowners in the area with wells, then as an alternative to up to three, you could say maybe one per property, something like that, so that everybody in that area could get a chance to get, get their tests done without the limitation of three.
Commission, any other thoughts on that?
Do, know stuff about waters.
I was just gonna suggest in, uh, Rick Bell in Rapid, uh, I was just gonna suggest that you delete the word up to and just put a minimum of. And then it's based on the conditions, so that's my suggestion.
That's a, that's a way to do it.
Sunny?
Does that sound good?
That would, that would do, but what if you had a very small site? But I, I would be in favor of that over, uh, limiting the number of wells.
And I would assume that the Planning Commission could say that if there's only two wells, we're gonna have a variance of some sort to say that just these two wells.
Do they have to apply for a variance though, to do that? That would be, you know.
Do you have to apply for a variance if there's not three wells?
PJ, you got, we need some help.
I mean, if there's not three wells in the area and if we word it this way.
Minimum of three.
You'd have to meet your minimum. You can't be more lenient. You can be more restrictive. Can't be more lenient.
You know, taking a little bit, you know, the, a little different point of view, I, I think that generally speaking, you know, there's, I'm sure some exceptions, but I, I think three wells are sufficient for even larger sites, because aquifers from the most part where these would be located would be pretty typical kind of aquifers. I mean, an exception might be further up in the Black Hills where there's a little more complexity and so on. But I think understanding the, the aquifers and the, where the water's being used and this and that, I think three wells is a nice number and, uh, to give us basic information. So I don't think it's, you know, that's the thing about water, it connects itself underground. And so you don't necessarily need to test every well to understand what's likely to happen and the vulnerabilities and the, the connectivity.
Okay. Any further comments?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, up to three wells is, is appropriate as well.
Appropriate.
If, if the site grows, um, you know, you're, the, the, the idea is, is you're still testing at that perimeter regardless of the size of, of that perimeter. So, um, I, I also agree that, uh, aquifers are, are somewhat, you know, characteristic. They, they, they would maintain that. So, um, I, I think testing of up to three wells is, is adequate for what the intent of this section has.
Okay, any further? All right, before we move on to page thirteen of seventeen, we're about two hours now. I would like to consider that we may consider a recess for parking movements and, and restroom breaks if that's a, uh, so if anyone has no objections, I would move that we recess until eleven oh five.
I would like to object until we hear comments from Brittany.
Oh, sorry. I just have a quick.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Brittany.
I don't think it'll take too long. I think it'll answer her questions. Underground water monitoring, A, B, and C. I think item B, uh, let's see. Or sorry, item C addresses drawdown. So I think that you could get rid of drawdown in A and just say measurement shall test for at a minimum bacteria and turbidity, period. And then item C actually addresses your drawdown test, which is a separate requirement. And then I do believe all tests shall be performed by a qualified third-party professional. The last sentence in C should actually be D. Sorry.
So all tests shall, shall be D. Okay. Good point.
So those are just my suggestions, because I think that drawdown is addressed in C, so I don't think, because you have A, B, and C and it's all underground water monitoring and I think they're all separate.
If I may.
Applicable to the.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, I, I like that, the direction you're going, Brittany, but my, my one concern is that section A is testing that's been completed prior to commencing mining activity. C is drawdown on wells that a property owner believes has been impacted by mining activities. So C is post-mining or during mining, you know, sometime, whereas A is before. And I think at a minimum, I mean, from my perspective, at a minimum, just taking simple water level measurements, so you know what those, the water level of those wells before mining started is, is, is important information. Now, if they want to do more and actually do these drawdown tests, they can do that. But at a minimum, those water levels need to be established before mining ever starts. She's saying that, but she's saying take out drawdown at the.
Or you could just add a separate sentence then, since drawdown isn't a measurement per se, just add a, another sentence at the end of A. And then you're covered on.
But I mean, and it's okay with me, at a minimum, bacteria, turbidity, and testing for drawdown.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be okay too. We just, just a, at a minimum, bacteria and turbidity, because those are measurements. And testing for drawdown. That would, that would solve it too. But I think it's important to understand that C, the way it's worded right now though, is after mining has commenced.
So is baseline a?
Baseline is before anything happens.
Right, but if C is after it's impacted, then is baseline?
Well, it's the same three wells, they.
Oh, the base.
Well, that's a good point. I, I'd have to think about that a little bit. Yeah.
Can you, can you come up here so we can hear?
Well, the.
Perl active instead of reactive?
Kathy, how does that sound to you?
Quality of water in the well has been impact, impacted.
What's your name, ma'am?
Could be impacted.
Yes, can you tell us your name?
Sherry Thurston.
Thank you, Sherry.
Well, I, I actually think that it's appropriate to have this, um, condit, have this opportunity where if a, a landowner, after mining goes on saying, my wells is affected, to have some sort of testing done. I.
Yeah, but this is the permit part, right? They haven't done anything yet? Or am I missing something?
Well, A and A is, but not, I mean, I don't know about C.
Oh.
A is before, C is if you think it's impacted.
Well, that's what it says, has been impacted. And I, somewhere this concept I think needs to be here. I, I think maybe the way to fix C would be drawdown tests, um, shall be conducted when requested in writing. Is the board in agreement with what Kathy's saying, or do we need to do something else? And take out the word baseline. Drawdown tests on up to three wells shall be conducted when requested in writing. That there's been, you know, concern about impact. Right, and, and is the rest of the board in agreement with what you're saying, Kathy, is what I'm asking?
Good idea.
Thank you. I'm not saying you're wrong.
I don't know.
Well, to me, the way to fix C would be just simply take out the word baseline, because now we're talking about a different situation. That it's no longer baseline. This is after mining has happened.
Right, I don't see baseline in C unless I'm mis, okay, you already took it out, okay.
Was that the intent of the board?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
The only other thing I had to ask was when you changed the stuff for the first one, A. Originally it was gonna be that the city could say, we're gonna test these three wells. But then you connected it to the person that is putting it in writing, giving you permissions, or if you're saying you only had two people that gave you permission in writing, you won't test three wells?
That's a good one for PJ, because he's saying minimally we have to test three.
But we, but there's no way we could require a well to be tested that the landowner wasn't gonna give permission.
Yeah, but it sounded like the permission would be given in advance, isn't all I'm trying to say is, is you could seek out permission, but you always have the right to get three? Am I being too picky?
I don't know.
PJ, can you clarify that one?
If it says three, a minimum of three, and this did come up in the committee and one of the thoughts was if one, if you need three and there's only three and only two of the landowners give you a requirement for that, then there'd have to be a special exception. It goes to the board to require less than that. So there is a process. It would take a little longer, but they could go ask for the.
Without meeting the minimum requirements, because.
With the board approval to go against the ordinance, yes.
Okay, Brian?
Just one comment. The intent of the original three baseline wells was to give, to give us three wells to come back and test again if there was a need to, so I just want to make that clear.
Uh, can we ask a question?
Yes, Brian. Kathy has a question for you.
So, so connecting of A, which is when you, that's when we establish those baseline wells and you do the testing in A. Then you commence mining and then there's a concern that's raised and then you go to C. Are you thinking that the only wells that will be tested under C would be the same three that got tested in baseline conditions?
Uh, that was my original thought on that, yes. Um, you know, obviously hearing that there could be an additional well within that fifteen hundred feet area, I think you'd have to take that into account. But if you test those three original baseline wells and compare them to what you received or what you had for information prior, then you've got a good indication of how, how are things being impacted in that area in general.
Well, then, then my opinion on how to change that wording should be drawdown tests on the three baseline wells shall be conducted.
Agreed.
Okay.
Or would it be drawdown tests on up to the three original baseline?
Right.
Wells.
That gives clarity of which wells.
Yeah.
Okay, any further on there?
Break, okay.
I, I, I move that we recess until, let's see, twelve, eleven, twelve.
Eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen, we'll make eleven fifteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, thinking about finding by saying aye? Aye, all opposed, same side.
Do you have to do a roll call?
Oh, yeet. Hold on.
Cause I'll say aye.
I made the motion. It was seconded by.
Oh, it's cold in here.
Sunny. Roll call vote since Lori's online.
Lori.
Aye, I can't, I couldn't hear you. Aye.
That's okay.
Aye.
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 All right, we are recessed. All right, so now that everyone's here, we're gonna reconvene. It's eleven eighteen and we need to, uh, I'll move that we reconvene at eleven eighteen.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, Jerry, can you do a roll call vote?
Lori?
Lori.
Can't hear you. Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. We have reconvened. Last we were on is twelve of seventeen. I, I believe we kind of finished that one out before we took our break. Just to recap, is there any further comments, just in case we miss any? If not, page thirteen of seventeen. Comments or concerns?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. And I'll, I'll make it similar to the VHRs. Um, it's not, uh, clear to me on, uh, nine B. Um, and so maybe this is, uh, the, the group, uh, and the committee can weigh in on this when that time happens in the meeting, but for mining operations previously approved and, and predating section three twenty, the mining activities shall be limited to, to the permit limit as described by the previously approved construction and or mining permits. So will that, will, will they just continue on then, uh, as the construction, under the construction permit limit until that ends? And then they would have to come back through on this, or would there be, uh, some sort of mechanism to continue? Or what was the overall thought of the committee on, on that item?
Deb, do you remember that one specifically? But I think Brittany does.
Yes.
I do. Um, I think that that was something that the State Attorney's Office was gonna have to look at, um, or look further into to determine what.
What it looks like moving.
That's my understanding from the...
Or if we move this forward, one way or the other, they would make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
Well, the bottom line, if we're talking about limits of operation, if you're an ag and you're in the middle of nowhere, it's not going to be the same as somebody that's affected with people right next to them that might affect their property, so I guess I didn't get where we were going.
As I read it, so operations that were previously approved and that predate Section 320, the mining activities shall be limited to the permit limit, and the question is, so before 320, they were in construction permits?
Mm-huh.
And, and so those lasted X number of years?
PJ, how long do, could, or Brittany, how long do construction permits last?
It depended. Some of them are reviewed every three years, five years, it would just depend on how that they were approved by the Planning Commission at the time. As far as the designated permit limit, most of them did not have a designated permit limit. They were basic legal descriptions, quarter-quarter sections, the ones that I've reviewed in the past. So I think that language will change based upon some conversations with the State's Attorney's Office and going through...
So we're just waiting for the new wording for 9B? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe that will change, that's...
And then Michelle, looks like she wants to say something on this.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, in quickly reading 9B, I think that ties into grandfathered rights and pre-existing uses, so that paragraph definitely will need to be reworked.
Okay.
Is it better to keep it in right now, and then have a recommendation, depending on what we decide here, or is it better to hold off and then have a final?
I just, I would eliminate the paragraph, because, and Brittany or Mr., Brittany or PJ may correct me, but we don't have defined, previously, there were no defined permit limits, right? So the legal nonconforming use is really going to fall within legal definitions of grandf, you know, what is expansion, what is grandfathered use, so I would just eliminate that paragraph entirely.
Okay. Any objections to eliminating it at this point in time?
I guess I don't see the, I don't see that, I guess, I don't know if that answers the question, though, of what...
How it's going to affect.
Yeah, and the reason I'm using the VHR is because that's what this committee just, you know, handled several months ago, and where the homes were, you know, if they were nonconforming with the ordinance, then they basically just continued on until the property sold, or they changed. And the question is, is how do you incorporate everything that's out there right now? Are they grandfathered, and then they continue, or is, what's the mechanism to continue, or is there the bringing in the process? Those are just main, and I don't have answers, I'm asking.
Right.
If that was discussed in the committee.
Commissioner Marsh, that's a very good question, and particularly because the Supreme Court, South Dakota Supreme Court has not answered those questions yet.
Hmm.
It's going to fall, this issue is going to ultimately be determined how, upon how the Supreme Court interprets expansion within the mining industry.
So maybe, maybe it's not wise to take it out completely, so it hangs there, so we at least have something to fall back somewhat?
Danielle, you advised us on this, do you remember the discussion on this, on why we had put this in there because of the mining? There was a lot of public and different discussion, but I remember you had some discussion on it that made some sense.
I think the discussion on this was the fact that there's, I believe, 190-ish mines in Pennington County, many of those that are working under construction permits right now, and we were concerned that if we didn't put something in here to acknowledge that for those operations that have been operating for decades under these construction permits, and following those, following those conditions that were set on those permits without any issue, there was no reason to drag them in through this lengthy and extensive process if we can keep those moving forward, and new operations or expansions, true expansions, go into this. I would argue the fact that on construction permits, we do have sections, quarter-quarters, and so forth, so we do know what the intended area for those within that construction permit is. So I would say there is a permit area already. The limit that I would be concerned with is the fact that those existing construction permits do come up for renewal, much like this process requests a renewal every so often, and at that renewal period now, do all those 194 operations have to come back through this? And does that mean that the county is ready for 194 mining applications to come up in the next three years?
Another concern, though, is the use of permit limit, because, again, Danielle may have more information, but the mining applications, I don't think state a permit limit, they identify perhaps parcels or acreage, but not a limit, you know, an area that's particularly where your excavation is limited to.
Right, because currently, there is no limit on it, because there are no setbacks on it, which means that anything that was put into that quarter-quarters, or whatever that is owned by the applicant, was intended to be mined.
And, again, this will get back to, what we're talking about is the diminishing assets doctrine, and that's the idea that mining, by its very nature, is expansive, it's not limited to going straight down in a pit. By its nature, it's expansive, and that doctrine has been adopted by the majority of the jurisdictions within the United States. However, it has not been adopted by South Dakota, so that remains to be decided, but Danelle's right, that the idea is that you can mine every square inch of that particular identified acreage. But, again, it hasn't been decided by the Supreme Court, so this paragraph is a little problematic.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle, thank you, Danielle. What does the board would like to do at this moment in time?
I guess, at this point, I would like to continue on going through the document. We'll punt on paragraph B and take input from the audience.
Okay. Any other comments? 14 of 17. Any concerns on 14 of 17? All right, 15 of 17. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Kathy.
I suggest a little, some words that need to be changed in paragraph E, and I'd try to make this consistent with the work that we did earlier today on, on page two, under our authority, and also, there's a section about, not, no, that's not right, I'm sorry, on page five, under public hearing, where we simply state that the notices need to be within 500 feet, and so I think that should be consistent, so change the 300 to 500 on the line three of that paragraph. And then down below, on the last, on the last sentence, "The new mining permit shall be required and approved only after a public hearing and findings that the change," and strike out the rest of it, and add, "The change will be consistent with the purpose of Section 320," which that is, which matches the, the section two of public hearing that we worked on earlier.
Okay. Any comments, any objections to that?
What was it looked after, the change?
The change will, the words that I believe we settled upon in that earlier paragraph, but I think it's, the change will be consistent with the purpose of Section 320. You can check that, Jerry, but make, you know, I'm trying to make consistent language between this section and the, and section two, E, section E, and then sub-paragraph two, public hearing on page five.
Travis, can you remind me why we changed it to adversely affecting neighboring properties? Do you remember that?
Sorry, I was, Ms. Kathy, I was asking Ms., or Ms. Travis, I was going to call.
No, I'm sitting, I'm trying to think here.
I can't remember. Kelsey, you were there, do you remember? Okay, yes. Because you were sitting in our meeting with us, that was one of the things you had brought up, or Mr. Hickey had brought up, but...
Well, not adversely affecting neighboring properties. I can't remember that one.
Michelle, Bill, do you guys remember any of that?
Um, this, sorry, Michelle, from air quality, from, sorry, Ms. Michelle. I don't remember changing it, but...
I don't. It doesn't.
Okay, so I just thought there needed to be discussion if someone had, had that, but maybe one of the, somebody that...
But bring it in inconsistent with the previous.
Right, so that our charge, our, you know, is the same, whether we're doing a public hearing for a new permit, you know, under this paragraph, or we're doing a public hearing under a new permit under the previous paragraph, our charge is the same.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori.
I just want to make sure I understand that I've heard things correctly. Are we using the distance of 500 feet consistently throughout to be in compliance with, to be consistent with other ordinances, or 300 feet?
I think we changed it to 500 for mining, but we also had the mining company, one of them at least, I won't represent all of them, that wasn't in disagreement with this, if I'm correct. And maybe, James, you were one of the smaller companies, did you have a question on the 500 feet, to be consistent? For the, okay, thank you.
So, yeah, I think Kathy wanted to be consistent, too, 500 feet across the board, right? Any further?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
Any further?
I concur, that's all I'll say.
All right.
I think that's a good point, and we're getting the same, we're getting the same meaning with consistent language.
Consistent, yep, that's good.
Any further questions, comments on page 15 of 17? 16 of 17.
I have one general comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Lori.
I'm sure this will be caught, again, being an English teacher, I'm assuming this will be caught when you go through and, and, you know, do the final edit, but it's very important to carry the title along with the text instead of split it between pages.
Thank you. Yeah, from, yeah. All right, page 16 of 17, any questions, comments, concerns? All right, how about page 17 of 17? No thoughts, no comments, no questions? I do have one question, I don't know if it's better for Brittany or PJ to answer. The performance bond, can you tell us how that kind of works, and what's the amount, and all that kind of good stuff? I wasn't there in the committee when we got going through this portion of it, so...
I think this was another section that was deferred to the Planning Commission, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't it? Because I don't remember the planning director, I thought that there was recommendations to change this section, there was a lot of comments on this section, referring to the performance bond, and it doesn't, and the only word that got in there was reclamation, which was your comment, Kathy, because I believe that there was some other comments based upon, like, site-specific conditions, and not the planning director and the Planning Commission, and third-party consultants, and price per acres, and there was a lot of different comments on this, and I don't think it ever really got...
The bottom line on the performance bond is, if you're looking at a companies, without sounding wrong, performance about reclamation and things maybe that had issues before, I don't know if this quite addresses that, that we could address that through a bond, meaning if they had violations or things before that might be of concern, or something, but bottom line, I don't know quite the wording, how you, if you just say that, it says a planning director, I didn't get the planning director part, but it should, I don't know if it should say planning director, it does say, "The Penning County Board of Commissioners may authorize a planner-director to use a performance bond to complete any work," but I don't think this is quite worded.
Is that above and beyond the state's requirement for a bond?
The state is 20,000, and you could have 40 companies, and those 40 companies all could pay $48 for their performance bond for each spot they were using. So that's why, if there needed to be additional, that's why I said we had put a performance bond in there. There was one under, I don't remember if it's Construction 507A or B, but, and then I had asked that at one of our meetings on the performance bond, and we could require it back then as well. Bottom line is, is there's got to be a mechanism, so the county doesn't have to pick up where somebody wasn't, you know...
Doing what they're supposed to.
Right, or before had issues with the same thing, and now, you know, now they came into our county instead of Mead County, and we need to have a performance bond this time.
Okay.
It's kind of like we may or sell, or, I don't know how you say that, have them get a performance bond, depending on certain circumstances.
So this is a secondary performance bond, but it's not defined how it's calculated or anything? That the county, the planning director, planning zoning, or no?
Not that I know of. Miss Brittany?
I'm not aware that any decision was made on how to determine that, I know there was quite a bit of comment on it.
There was.
There was a lot of comment on whether it should be the planning director, the Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners, what that number should be, how we determine that number, I just don't ever think that that got by the committee ever...
We didn't determine anything, because we didn't know whether it be the public or the mining company, what that bottom line should be, and if there's, maybe the audience also has some direction that we could use for this as well, so...
Because that would be a concern of mine, if we don't have a formula, I agree, $20,000, I don't think that's enough if something happens, and I don't think the public should pay for it.
Right, and that's, that's the whole... The whole state is, their bond is 20,000.
Right.
So it's not just Pennington County, so you can have, like I said, 28, 38, 28 companies, and that 20,000 is like 50, 50, 50, you know what I'm saying? That bond isn't 20,000 per site. So it's something that I believe is important, I just, and I think the, I shouldn't just speak for what I'm thinking, the committee, we couldn't get to what we're supposed to do on that, so...
Okay, so then I will say I'm open to information for those of y'all taking notes.
I could give you a little...
James is on it.
Oh, come on up, James.
Jim Dean, Dakota Stone. I do a lot, most of our pits are on Forest Service, and the way that Forest Service handles bonding, they go in with their engineer, they take a look at the site, they look at the size of the site, they say it's going to take two hours with a dozer to push it in, it's going to cost 500 bucks to reseed it, they come out with a, what they figure it's going to cost to reclaim it. I go in, I assess what I think it's going to cost me, and we sit down and we hash it out, and then that's how much the reclamation bond is, that's how we do it with the Forest Service.
So it's basically you and the Forest Service get together, y'all basically both give a, "I think it's going to cost me this, I think it's going to cost me this," and y'all negotiate.
And we negotiate a little bit, and we just come up with a number, you know, according to what size it is, and then as far as the state goes, you're right, you can do a statewide 20,000, but it's like $500, I believe, per acre on a licensed site, is all the state requires. But if we have a state license on Forest Service, then we have to pay, then the Forest Service will take that $500 out of that amount that we figure with them. So if my bond with the Forest Service is $3,000, and I'm on a state permit, then they'll take 500, give the state $500, and give the Forest Service $2,500, so it stays at the 3,000, the total bond.
For some reason, I haven't heard that, James, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
But I will research it as well, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Okay, thank you very much for your input. Do you have input on bonding? Well, not yet.
This is not a performance bond.
No, only if you have, like, very specific with performance bonding.
I was just trying to find out, is anybody imposing an end date to when some of this stuff happens?
Probably not at this time yet. We can talk about that in public comment.
Kathy?
You know, I was, in thinking a little bit about this performance bond, I started thinking about, is it, so is this, would this be a condition of a permit? Let's say that a condition of a permit is that they have to post a performance bond of thus and so? Or is this the decision about whether they need to post a performance bond or something? A separate step?
I'm trying to figure out, I think you're right, is it a stipulation? Or is it, should something every company should, or person mining have to do? Because again, they have to do it through the state, but is it enough coverage? So should it be a stipulation or a condition? Of the permit?
And if it is a condition or a stipulation, I think, I mean, I'm not sure, this is the enforcement section, what we're looking at here, and I'm not sure that that's the right place to talk about a condition. I do think the second half of this paragraph saying, "the Pennington County Board of Commissioners may authorize the planning director to use the performance bond to complete work." I think that is an enforcement issue. Let's say they, you know, walk away or do something, and they need to do the reclamation. But this first part where we're actually talking about the assessment as performance bond, I think that needs to be somewhere else where we talk about it being a condition of the permit, or.
Back up in G, maybe, with the application?
It could be, I mean, I mean, it's like a condition where we, you know, we impose these different conditions, and this could be one of them. I'm not really sure where it needs to be, but it just occurred to me that I understand.
Brittany? Brittany wants to say something.
All right. Under this one, and before reclamation actually got inserted in here, when you actually read it, it has to do with erosion and sediment control. And typically, when we require bonds, we have in a couple instances, for erosion, sediment control, we use the state DOT criteria. They have, you know, costs associated with certain best management practices that they, you know, figure that is what's normal or common for the industry. And so if you read that without reclamation, they're not actually speaking of the reclamation plan. They're actually talking about the erosion and sediment control, and things that are keeping the site. It's more of a maintenance than actually the reclamation plan. So, I don't know if you want the performance bond for the reclamation plan, or you want the performance bond for the erosion and sediment control, which, quote-unquote, is maintenance? Or do you want it for both? Because this, actually, without that word "reclamation," and it is the maintenance of the site, the performance bond for the maintenance of the site.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I found this in additional information, so it was in number six on page eight of 17, where it says that "the planning director may require submission of other information necessary to determine the nature of the proposed mining operation and reclamation. In effect on the surrounding area, the information shall include but is not limited to proof of performance or surety bond, applicable access easements or agreements."
Okay, so no need to move any of that there?
I see what Kathy's saying, too. It would be a clarification, so the first half of that, of performance bond, it would move up into the mining permit, and then the second half is the enforcement. So I understand the split.
All right, well, I'll take some direction if y'all want to split it that way, leave. Where it says, "the Pennington County Board of Commissioners may authorize," leave that here in the, is that what you're suggesting? Kathy Anne Rich, leave that here in the enforcement?
Yeah, that would stay in the enforcement.
And then moving above that to where specifically?
Because the way it's written, "the planning director may, in his or her discretion, require any applicant for the mining permit," so it's talking about the applicant for the mining permit. So it's taken care of, but to read better in the document, it makes more sense to have it further up.
Actually, it seems like it's almost word-for-word similar.
In the.
In additional information?
Yes.
Yep.
Can we just put "planning director may require"? Do we have to put "his or her discretion"? Because "may" means discretion, doesn't it?
Right, I agree.
Right. So what are we directing?
We take out discretion, his or her. In his or her discretion, you can just put "the planning director may require." I'm sorry, performance bond, Ms.
17 of 17.
Okay.
Performance bond, yeah, there we go.
What do you want there?
Just delete "in his or her discretion."
Oh, she already deleted the whole.
You already did.
The whole first part of that.
And then you move the first part up, is that right? It would go back underneath the application.
What page is that, Rich?
Eight of 17.
Yeah, it would be seven.
Eight or seven, somewhere in that area.
Seven of.
Page eight of 17. This would be underneath the mining permit application period.
He can't.
So.
Sorry, it would be underneath the mining permit application, so you could make it like number seven.
Okay.
It is actually, now it'd be, just move back, it's right after this additional information, or right before, whichever, keep going backwards, Jerry, a little bit.
Right above, I would do it probably right above, just in case.
Yeah, so make it number four, an additional information, number five.
But I'm thinking that based on what Brittany's comment was, if you go back to page 17 of 17 now, where we were, since we added reclamation to the first half of that paragraph, I think it needs reclamation in the second half of the paragraph, too. So in other words, we're saying that we can use bond money to complete any work proposed in the permitted site plan, or, well, in the site plan is reclamation, isn't it?
Yep.
Oh, it's different, okay, so it needs to be site plan,
You're right.
reclamation, or stormwater pollution prevention plan. Is that right, Brittany?
If that's what you have, if you want the reclamation plan.
Yes.
I want the reclamation, because if you look under the site plan requirements, reclamation isn't under the site plan.
Okay, so I, I mean, it's my belief that reclamation should be in there.
And then if you go back to page eight, you'll have to add that in there, too.
Yep. Kathy, can you repeat that for?
Oh, in paragraph four, the performance bond on that page, Jerry, where it says, "proposed in the permitted site plan, comma, reclamation plan." Okay, done. I mean, no, no, it's okay, leave it like that. Oh, okay, and then, and then just leave the rest of the sentence.
And Jerry, did you have a question? Were you saying something about eight, or?
No.
Okay.
And I think the comments and the discussion about, you know, how is the bond calculated and so on, I mean, it's still, those are still worthwhile, questions and comments and so on. And I think those should be, you know, if it's, if it's the wishes to put that kind of information, you know, in that, in the paragraph that we moved up. I'm not sure what the outcome should be, but.
And maybe we should look through other states and stuff, also, and what they, you don't copy them exactly, but sometimes they have some wording we can use as well, which at that time, we just wanted to see what you guys were thinking, and then move forward of, do you really want this performance bond in there, or what's your, what's your thoughts?
Okay, any further comments? All right, 18 of 17, since it was an added page late, I'm guessing that's why we didn't say 18 of 19. Any comments on that page of 18 of 17? Questions or concerns?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I understood the email right, from Jerry, this section just got added in there from staff, is that, is that right? The 507B minerals, okay.
There was, sorry.
And so it basically would put some of this, you know, so it makes it still in construction permits, but a conditional use permit at a minimum, in conformance at a minimum with section 320. And I'm wondering if maybe, just for clarification, if it should be its own section? Should it be, or do you want it to be, remain under construction permits?
Brittany?
Most of it has to do with how it was legally advertised, so if it was, if the Board of Commissioners directs a committee to create a separate minerals or hard rock mining ordinance, staff would probably propose it to be section 321.
Okay.
But right now, because of the way that the advertising was, and because there was so much comment on getting some kind of oversight on minerals, otherwise we wouldn't have any permit process or anything like that for it. That we put it in B for the time being, once, if the board wants a committee to review it and suggest something, then staff would suggest that it would be another section 321, I would propose.
And what that direction looks like, so we're going to bring the ordinance, so we need to do NCU and move that to what the board believes needs to be a committee, or who needs to do that ordinance, so. That hasn't.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori.
I couldn't really hear everything Brittany was saying. Could you clarify that you feel like minerals extraction should be in another section and not in 507? Is that what Brittany was saying?
No, she was basically saying that the way this is moving forward, it would, there would be nothing there that would cover minerals, so we added this so that there's something that covers it right now, so that they don't have carte blanche ability to work without a permit.
And if they did another, the next section would be 321 under mining permits. Right now, it's under 320, but it would be a whole new section, once it came forward.
And then the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
And that the Planning Commission would be doing the NCU mining permits, just kidding. I saw her look up. No, I don't know who's going to do that, but we're, the board will determine that, Ms. Lori, so.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Any further comments on 18 of 17?
Mr. Chair, my only other comment would be the definition of minerals, and then, I guess it goes back to one of the first pages as well, how some of those very specific, you know, minerals and that kind of stuff, is there some sort of standard that those were pulled from? Like the economic value, whether organic or inorganic?
I'll let Brittany.
Gold, silver, uranium. My question is, is there an outlier out there that isn't listed here that we're somehow going to not incorporate?
When we looked up the definition, we went through the state of South Dakota statute, and Jerry can testify to this, but in three different places, the state had mineral defined three different ways. We tried to make it as inclusive as we could with the definitions that we could find, and could something be missing? Sure, I guess that could be brought up in the public comment if there was something that's not here, but that, this was our attempt to at least try to be as inclusive as we could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Any further? And then 19 of 17, the last little bit there, any comments or questions there? If not, I would like to open it up to staff to give us some inputs before we move to public comment. Okay, Kathy has one overarching comment.
You know, I was approached by a few individuals about, and they, you know, they wanted the point about, you know, the state gives licenses for these kinds of aggregate kind of mines rather than a permit, and and at the county level, we're calling it a permit, and I know, and there was, and so the concern is that there's going to be a lot of confusion as to, you know, the county calls it a permit, the state calls it a license. And I know this was talked about extensively in your committee, and so I'm just, I'd just like a, you know, kind of an explanation about where that landed in your committee discussions, and so I have some information on that.
Okay.
Do you want to tackle that one, or do we want to have someone else?
Is anybody that was on the committee, do you have a comment on this? Why we, because I think the state requires, if I'm guessing, mining license, and that we wanted to separate, saying it was a mining permit from the county. If we said license, I think it would have been more confusing. So, Danielle, Brian, you guys. Brian, you're on the committee. Ms. Nancy, after, after Brian, I think it'd be good, because Nancy helped us a lot from the public on this, some of this.
I don't know, I have a whole lot to say on that in particular. We were going, we were covering the mining permit section from the previous way the ordinances were set up, and I think then we just kind of continued on with using that, that terminology as mining permit. We did many times reference mining license from the state side, and wanted to clarify that this county permit coincides or jives with the mining license that you would get from the state, whereas a mining permit from the state has yet to be developed here for the county.
Right.
Right.
But in terms of terminology, I don't know that I have a whole lot to say about that.
Okay. Ms. Nancy, did you have something, you were helping us with some of the definitions and things that we were trying to come up with?
Yeah, if you go back to the original resolution to create the committee, it did not specify sand and gravel or minerals. You just had, you could work on anything. And when I first started attending the committee, it was working on mining permitted under 45, under chapter 45-6 and 45-6B. I call it, I refer to the chapters. And part of the way through, it was decided to just do chapter 45-6 and not do 45-6B. And your question about switching the name from mine permit to license, I never, ever heard it discussed, and I think you have an excellent point. And I have always thought it very confusing, because the state, what, we would be in Pennington County calling a mine permit, the state calls a mine license, and it's just confusing, and then when we get around to having a separate ordinance for mine permitting, which is chapter 45-6B, we're going to call that mine permit, too, and I think your suggestion is excellent, and I'm repeating, I don't think we ever discussed it at all.
We did discuss it, they just said, Ms. Nancy, but you might have missed some of the meetings, I know you weren't at the beginning of the meetings, but it was to determine on mining license or permit. If we have something different, I'm not disagreeing with anybody saying. What I'm saying is, I thought it was more confusing to, the reference to mine license shows you that where's at the state what you need. Mine permitting, I thought, was more towards what the county was doing, and I think you got more confused if you didn't say, what else would you call it? And I'm okay with discussion from audience or other people, but what else would you call this, and how would it be less confusing? So we did discuss this, I just didn't.
Mr. Chair? Jim has an input real quick, if you don't mind, Rich.
This is a confusing thing with the state. I do both. I have mine permits with the state, I also have mine licenses. And what you're doing is similar to the mine permit that we do for the state. What you did, which is, a lot of it's just repeat stuff, for me, you know, on all the reclamation and everything, I have to do all this stuff for them anyway. So, but one thing that, that last paragraph that got thrown in there just to cover minerals, and that's B on 507B, they had, the state has decorative stone and dimensional stone in their mine permit. And that, and then, so then you guys included that in with the minerals? And I would like, and I think what you did with that you need a special use permit application for mineral extraction, I think that gives the county a good platform. for mineral extraction, I think that gives the county a good platform to...
James, the subject, James, is mining permit or license, and how that's confusing.
Right, right, I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to...
Okay, I guess I was trying to think if you wanted to change that instead of the...
I kind of do, but...
You can do that on general comment, James, you were, you were, public comment on ours, but on this year, we have to let the, all the public speak.
Right, right, right. But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that you, you have it divided out here, just like the state does.
Okay, so, that's why you're saying it's confusing, is because mining license and permit, because of what we're doing in that as well.
Right. Well, you're covering both. By saying that they have to have a special, a conditional use permit, now you're covering all minerals and all licenses. So now you're covering all licenses and all permits.
So the solution, what we're asking, James, today is the solution, and I thought you had had that solution for me on...
This is a good solution. You've got everything covered here, except for minerals, and when it comes to minerals, it says, any mineral would be, would need a conditional use permit application. So then, when the mining company would come to you and say, I want to mine gold, then you would say, well, you have to have a conditional use permit. So then, you would go, you would look at that, you would have a chance to look at that as a separate situation, rather than just being a, thrown in with all this other stuff. And that's what you're going to have to do with mineral mining anyway. Each thing has to be looked at separately. So that conditional use permit gives you that opportunity...
All right.
...pull them out of this and look at them separately.
Thank you, appreciate it.
But I have more on this, where it involves me for later.
All right, thank you, Jim. Rich, you were going to make a comment?
My only comment was in the general description, when the Board of Commissioners approved the formation of the committee, it looks to me like they, they put it on construction permits, mining permits, and alternative energy. So the simple naming of the permit versus license looks to me like it was probably all the way back to April 5th of 2016.
I did catch all of that.
Terminology, right? Between permit and license and when that occurred?
Yeah, I think so.
If I may one question?
Yes, Karen.
So, just so I'm clear, so that the terminology, whether this is called, you know, Section 320 now, we're, yeah, we're just talking about, whether it's called, you know, the mine permitting process or the mine license process, that nomenclature, that terminology, there's no reason, there's no thing, nothing to preclude calling it a license versus the permit, except that's the pattern that was established. Is that right? There's no legal reason or other kinds of reasons?
Do we get other permits, and do we define what those permits do? Because this is not the only permit you get for, there's mining permits, what other permits do we have in the county? There's a building permit, there's a, you know, what other terminology would we use?
I don't know about other terminology, but we do have lots of other permits. The only license we issue is for tattooing.
So I guess, that's what I'm saying.
And I don't know if this is going to help, but I did look through the APA dictionary, and essentially what it says is, licenses include permits, permits do not include licenses. So it says, basically, licenses are a larger umbrella.
Interesting.
Yeah, it is interesting.
Fair enough.
I believe that mining permit is, it might be confusing, but I don't know what other else we would call it, without confusing the public as well, when you're doing something, this, you might not confuse the mining companies, because they know what they want, but what else would you call it, and change the definition so the public couldn't find it? So people that've been in mining, that's a little bit different, but if you haven't been in mining, mining permit is pretty simple for most of us. Maybe for me, I guess I should speak for myself, but...
Fair enough. Any final comments from the commission?
No, I'd like to thank the committee, since I see the committee here, for coming today, and Dwayne's not here today, but also Dwayne and others that have been, the public and stuff through this. Again, thank you for coming, you have been to very many, a lot of meetings already. And again, this is, we were a recommending body, it was a draft, so...
Deb, I just want to offer staff to add some tweaks. There were some things that they spoke to me on the side about, just to clarify before we move to public, so it might clarify some stuff for the public before moving forward. So I just, it's the only reason why I want to let them add some of their tweaking, so that it clarifies it for you guys. So PJ, would you like to come up here and let us know some of those adjustments based on our wording changes?
I can just give you one thing that kind of stuck out after it sat in my mind for a little bit. So on page five, number two, under public hearing, and then also, it looks like it'll be on page 15, because you, where basically you're relying on Section 320 to make the decision. And that's fine, we have no objection to that. The overarching document that every other ordinance is born from is the comprehensive plan. So you should also include that it needs to be in conformity or harmony, or whatever word you want to use, with the comprehensive plan.
Where did you want to add that, if you added it?
So if you were to, on page five, number two, on that page, you have it up there?
Yep.
Yeah, basically, just included the last sentence before the large sentence that's underlying on the bottom, just included at the end of that sentence or before Section 320.
And tell me again what you just said.
Well, whatever word you guys want to use, in conformance with the comprehensive plan, I know you don't want to use in harmony, but that's kind of the industry...
What is the standard that we use?
A professional word, what?
What's the standard that we're using across the board for the...
In harmony.
In harmony.
I guess I would have to...
That is the, that is the industry word.
We could add that, but I would like to have that as a side note, to see if we should add it, because I, I guess I'm not understanding your full purpose.
If I could take a second?
Sure.
So I have the current comprehensive plan with me, which really doesn't give us much guidance, but with the comprehensive plan that's coming, that is something that we are looking to add in. And just kind of for the public and for the Planning Commission, just one paragraph on what a comprehensive plan does. A comprehensive plan is a general guideline used by the county in decision-making. It also serves as a source of public information. A comprehensive plan looks beyond today into issues and opportunities for the future. A comprehensive plan should be used as a technical guide by staff, local-appointed and elected officials in making land use decisions. A comprehensive plan serves as an instrument that establishes long-range policies, which can be referred to in the decision-making process. It's a very, it's a key document.
And Jerry's adding some language there just...
And we can figure out what that connecting word's going to be, but if...
Ms. Jerry?
We'd just like to make the point that we think that that should be used also as a point of comparison, and then also add it on page 15.
See if they want to add it, Jerry, before you add it to it.
Yep. Kathy, go ahead.
Yeah, PJ, I tend to agree, and I appreciate you bringing that forward, that the comprehensive plan should be considered in this. And I'm perfectly all right to say, just like it is now, it's consistent with the purpose of Section 320 and the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure, you know, we need to go through the trouble of finding the right word.
Good point.
But, and I'm, and I really don't need to, this doesn't need to be in there, but I think in this case, harmony kind of makes sense, because, you know, I was looking for something a little more concrete, when, you know, looking at the purpose of 320, does it meet it or not? Whereas the comprehensive plan is a little bit more amorphous, if you will, and so if you need, in my, you know, personal view, if we need another word there, you know, in this case, I think harmony fits.
I think we had that discussion, we should probably let the public have, before he changes that again.
We'll just let it stay highlighted, just in case.
But it would also be added to page 15 in Section H12E, I believe, we make that recommendation.
Okay. Michelle.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I'd like to go back to, before public comment, go back to page 13, 9B. I think it's very, very important that this commission, as well as the public, understand the impact of what's being proposed under 9B.
We took it out, I thought we eliminated it.
No, I believe it's still...
Still sitting up there.
I apologize, because I put eliminate paragraph, I apologize, Ms. Michelle.
So the way it currently stands, it indicates that the activity shall be limited to the permit limit. As previously stated, our previously issued mining permits do not define a permit limit. What's been suggested is that that should be changed to, you know, to, you know, I guess mining activity shall be limited to, you know, the legal definition that's been identified in the earlier permits. The problem with that is, if you do that, what you're saying is that all of the 194 operations currently in existence would be able to mine every square inch of the legal definition of their property. Essentially, if you do that, you're adopting the diminishing assets theory, something the Supreme Court hasn't even considered. Certainly, we can draft our own legislation, but I want you to understand that, if you've got, if you've got property defined as legal description, they can mine all the way up to the boundaries of the property that they own.
I thought we had put that, you were going to send us to the State's Attorney for better wording.
I believe there was, I just want to make sure the Board understands the implications of what that provision says.
Okay.
Okay, so do we want to remove that?
I, I just put, I don't know if you guys did, I just put attorney, State Attorney, more comments, look into definition. That's up to you guys, but...
Rich, do you want to keep it on there?
I, my thought was is that we would review that section with public comment.
Okay. Any further? All right, staff, any last minutes? Okay, public, just so you know, we've been here for a long time today, and I really don't want to have to take up much more of your time, you know, we're kind of on a time crunch, but we'd also like to hear your important comments. I would just encourage you to make sure, if you're saying the same thing as someone else previously, say, I ditto so-and-so's comments, but these are my new facts that I'd like to give to you. And I do believe I said at the beginning, let's start with three minutes as I work through and see where we're at with time, because what could happen is if we lose Lori due to work, if we lose Sunny due to work, you're going to have a very limited board that can vote, and it, you know, there's going to be, there might not be any kind of decision. So just keep that in mind, if we're wanting to work through a decision today, one way or the other, we need to be able to do that before we lose some of our board members.
Travis, you don't have to vote today on this. I mean, you can, it's a possibility, but it can be moved to the next meeting.
It could be.
And then you need Ms. Holly for your timer, I think.
Ms. Holly for the timer, oh, where's Ms. Holly?
You can, Holly, did you want to do the timer?
If you want to wing it, you can. If you want me to actually use the system that cuts them off, we can do that too.
Board, how would you all like to do it? Would you like to kind of wing it? Okay, we'll wing it, we'll see how it goes, we'll see if we can push through this and see how it goes, and then hopefully we'll all be respectful of that timeframe. All right, Gina, do you want to start first, since you walked from all the way in the back?
Gina Parkhurst, homeowner of Rapid City. I just have a quick comment. I think Planning Commissioner Rich had mentioned on page 18...
Mr. Chair, please remind them to speak right into the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Absolutely, she cannot hear you. I was on a teleconference the other day, and if you don't speak right in there like this, they're not going to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me? Is that better?
Pull your mic down, honey, that'd be, so you don't have to lean so far, Ms. Gina.
I'm too short, that's the problem, okay. Gina Parkhurst, homeowner in Rapid City, and I want to just comment on what Commissioner Rich had talked about on page 18, Section 507, Construction Permits B Minerals. I appreciate that it was added at the last minute, but I do think that it needs more work, because I want to remind everyone, our state does not currently have regulations for uranium, ISL uranium mining, and so it's really important that the county has something in place for that, because our state suspended its regulation over that time, type of mining, which leaves it to the federal authorities. And I think the closest EPA office would be in Denver, and I think I heard the closest NRC office would be in Texas. So I just want to urge you to spend some extra time on that section. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gina.
Yep.
My name's Sylvia Cox, I'm a resident of Pennington County. I'm a retired attorney, never licensed in South Dakota, but in several other jurisdictions. And I think there's one issue I want to address that's most important, I regard it as the elephant in the room, and has not been discussed at all today, although I think others following me will speak about this. And that is what amounts to a change in, an important change in the uses permitted under the zoning law. And I'd like to begin by suggesting that when this committee was formed, it was not formed to review uses under the zoning law. If you read the general description on the first page of the reasons why the committee was formed, it was formed to review, I'm paraphrasing, but this is accurate, to review mining permits and to rewrite sections of the ordinance pertaining to mining. It was not constituted to review uses under the zoning law. And so I'm referring particularly to Section 302, 320A1, which now permits commercial gravel mining in the agricultural zone, and this was not permitted before. And I'm also referring to 507B, which apparently also permits mineral mining uses in the agricultural zone, and that was not permitted before. These major changes to the zoning law are very serious, and they're very extensive. Commercial gravel mining through and including all aspects up to and including the construction of cement plants, both temporary and permanent, will be now allowed in the agricultural, in the agricultural section. Many people rely on the existing zoning law, and recently, we've been through an effort, which is the Kroll effort, which went all the way to the State Supreme Court, wherein, in dictum, but related to the basic underlying decision, the court said clearly that commercial gravel mining is not permitted in A1 agricultural zones. And now to come through and do this in this backdoor way, I have personally been aware that this committee existed for a long time, but I had no idea until very recently that they were going to change uses under the zoning law. And when I found out, I went to a recent meeting, and when I raised this issue, I was told that the committee had been considering these matters for a full year, and the implication was that I was out of line to raise a major issue at this point. So I'm, I'm very upset about this, I think it's improper to make a use change like this in this manner. And I would also like to say that this law takes review of the final decision of these matters out of the hands of the county commission. So in effect, the voters will not have an opportunity to elect or reelect people who make what they view as improper decisions under this. And to my mind, that is as grievous a change to the zoning law to Agricultural One as the permission of commercial mining. There are other methods, and if all, and the planning director said that these changes were required because there's gravel in every agricultural plot in the county, but every agricultural plot in the county is different. And so if you want to make a zoning change that permits this heavy industrial, it's a heavy industrial, commercial activity that is now going to be allowed in the agricultural zone, you do it by rezoning specifically, and then you have an opportunity to really take into account what's around the area where the, where the heavy commercial activity is going to take place. Or you can have a zoning variance, there are plenty of ways...
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay, let me just quickly say that on page five, the county commission should, should or must take into account the provisions that are set forth in Section 3, and that aggrieved is different from affected. I think in aggrieved, you have to prove you've been harmed, and when a permission's being granted, there won't be any harm in advance. And also, I think permitting people to sit on these permits for five years is improper, because then they get 10 years of commercial mining in agricultural district, whereas the land use all around it may change in a 10-year period, it's too long a period. Those are my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Parker. I have been to a couple of the committee meetings, and I represent a group of concerned citizens. If the Board will allow me, like I said, I represent a group of people, if you give me a little bit more time than three minutes, I'd greatly appreciate it, since I'm representing so many different people.
Mr. Chair, do you have time?
I'll try to make it as brief as I possibly can, I understand we're on some time constraints. First, I think it's important for the Board to take in consideration some history and why this committee was formed in the first place. I represent the concerned citizens who appealed the decision of the planning director to the county commissioners, who reversed the decision of the planning director. As Sylvia mentioned, it ended up going to the South Dakota Supreme Court. In the meantime, Kroll filed a suit against the county alleging that the county had taken away some property right by virtue of them getting a recommendation from... away some property right by virtue of them getting a recommendation from the planning director that they were entitled to a construction permit. Essentially, if this board decides, or the county commissioners decide, that the standard to appeal the decision to the county commissioners is only an aggrieved standard, I think this board and the county commissioners would be ignoring the decision of the South Dakota Supreme Court. I think it's very important to note that this isn't a standard to appeal to, to Circuit Court. This is appeal, like Ms. Johnson said, to the county commissioners, to go before the board and have an opportunity to be heard. I'm trying to make this as brief as I possibly can. I, I think a big consideration, there was something mentioned about a conditional use permit, how let's use the same language, which I appreciate consistency. But we have to keep in mind that this is a very unique industry. This is commercial mining. This isn't someone requesting that they put an advertising board on their front porch. This isn't asking to make their house a vacation rental. This is, this is really affecting a larger group of people. So while I respect the language currently in the conditional use permit, I think this is a very different area. As Sylvia mentioned, I think it's also very important that we consider who makes the final decision. And why this is important is county commissioners, once they make a decision, the right of the people, they're allowed the opportunity to refer it to a public vote. The South Dakota Supreme Court has discussed that this right isn't available to other county boards. So if you limit the ability of residents to appeal the decision by making them aggrieved and you say that the final decision lives with the planning commission, the public really loses all their ability to appeal, to go to court, to take it to a public vote. I also represented the people in Lawrence County who, once the county commissioners made a decision, they referred it to a vote of the people and the county commissioner's decision was overturned. It's a South Dakota constitutional important right and the state legislature has provided that right to the counties, the counties, the citizens of the county.
Kelsey, you're at five.
Do you mind if I just take two more minutes?
A couple of gentlemen's.
She gets a total of nine, I think.
I'm just letting her know where she was at.
Okay, sorry. And I also appreciated the conversation about the language in harmony with and inconsistent with, or not consistent with. I think that's also important because the, the planning commission and the county commissioners need to make this decision and they need to have discretion to make a decision. And that's also important as it relates to referendum because only matters that are administrative, excuse me, legislative decisions can be referred to a public vote. So if you simply take a paper and check, 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 they did all these things, that also limits the ability of people to refer this matter to a public vote. I think this area was kind of, went over a little too quickly possibly, but the whole renewal process, I think we need to dive in a little bit deeper. These mining permits last five years and the renewal process grants them another five years. The notice provisions contained in, contained in that section, I think, are simply inadequate. The mining companies, if the board of commission or the planning commission decides to revoke a permit, the mining companies are entitled to a public hearing. On the flip side of that, no one from the county is entitled, or no citizens of the county are entitled to a public hearing unless they live within 300 or 500 feet and own property or have a business. I think the same standard should apply with a public hearing as it did on the initial application, as it does on the renewal process. Laws change, things happen, neighborhoods are developed, those sorts of things have to be taken in, into consideration. And to say that, well, we're complying for five years, so therefore we get another five years, then, I mean, it would imply that these mining companies should get permits that last in perpetuity and I don't think that's the point of this ordinance. As I said, the notice needs to be more extensive, similar to the original application process. And without repeating, Ms. Sylvia, I echo the same concerns about allowing commercial mining in, in land designated as general agriculture. I, I think that is inconsistent with the language previously provided in the ordinance.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Nancy Hilding, President Perry Hills, Alabama. I doubt I can fit this into three minutes. I'm going to add, and I, I did bring this up in the committee, I'm going to ask you to think outside the box and look at Lawrence County. And Lawrence County, which has fought about mining a lot and has mining companies and concerned people, all mining, all commercial mining is conditional use in all districts. They, they have some constraints on floodplains. Okay? So I would like you to think outside the box and think about going to that, that all mining is conditional use everywhere, same Pennington County. Then the hearing, the final hearing is with the county commission and you don't have to worry about the whole appeal person aggrieved issue because you just solved it by making a conditional use with the final decision with, with the commissioners. All right. If you decide not to do that and continue and not make it conditional use everywhere's, we still want automatically the final decision to be made by the commissioners, not by the planning board. You know, we just want that automatic, that we don't have to worry about the definition of people aggrieved and we don't have to worry about how long we have to appeal. It just automa, this is, this is not about moving your garage five feet into the setback. This, this has a huge impact on lots of other people. For the mining, for the mining committee, I sent a two-page letter, I have a copy here, I assume you got it, about all the people who are impacted by this. These, these have, this is not expanding your garage. This is something very different. Automatically goes to the planning commission to make the final decision, not the planning commission, county commission makes the final decision, period. No appeal needed. However, if you, and if, if you do keep the aggrieved, I think that needs to be defined. You go into codified law 7827, which is, it's, person aggrieved is not well-defined. It's in four pages, a teeny type about legal decisions. You know, you want to use that, people need to know what it means. Okay. We suggest if you go forward with this system, we think 30 days is not enough notice. We want 45-day notice at the beginning. For the appeal, we want 20 days. We also don't think.
And so you're at three.
Well, I can't get through all of this. And you're going to stick to your three, right?
I'm going to give you a little leeway because we gave a couple others, just a little leeway, but I would like for you to wrap it up if we can, so we can let other people talk.
The harmony thing, I'm glad you're keeping that. The, the public should have a notice for the, the permit renewal, these people are talking about that. Setbacks of 500 feet, Lawrence County has a buffer zone of 500 feet and it's not automatically 500 feet. They have a bunch of conditions to look at. It must be 500 feet, but it could be bigger and they have a whole set of conditions like topography, population density, all of these things they have to think about to think about whether they want the setback to be greater. So I'm once again suggesting you to look at Lawrence County on your setbacks. Better protection for sound is needed for historical, cultural and biodiversity. I don't have time. Okay. So real quickly to get into your, Lawrence County also differentiates between small and large mines and charges different amounts and has different requirements. Okay? So if we go real quickly to your, your last page, your second to last page, the thing you added here, you, you now bring in 456B for codified law that restricts your activities to not being inconsistent with state law and conflict with state law. So you need to tack that in here. I think you need something like a severability clause, because this was written very quickly, that says, you know, if anything we have in here conflicts with state law, you know, we're going to follow state law or whatever your cure is for if you accidentally conflict. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Thank you. Can we, can we run some others?
Just, just one more thing real quick. Your conditional use thing here, you have same-size font. You have two pages devoted to conditional use. Lawrence County has seven. Look at your conditional use requirements, doesn't really apply to mines.
Thank you. Any others from the public? Jim, oh, well, Jim, go ahead. Hi.
Yeah, wow. I just had a couple of things. You know, we, we've got some little pits that we run. We have a couple of guys that work in them, just in and out. Our operations are quite a bit different than most heavy-use minings that are in every day, all day long. Thinking that, you know, we're wondering where we're going to stand the course when you get done here, you know, we're thinking that we're not going to be new. I'd like to have you think about how you're going to treat people. Like they said, there's 190-some of us out here that are operating. You need to think about how you're going to treat us. I have a suggestion that, you know, we're not, that we would not be considered new, that we would be considered renewed, that we would go through, you know, all the permit process that you're asking for. Give us a little bit of time to do that, but don't, you know, throw us all into new. If you throw that into new, and then you, and then you also throw us into zoning, the, let's see, I don't have time here. But anyway, I guess we're, for me, we, we, we work small pits here, small pits there, small pit there. So, you know, I'm looking at having to dig up $20,000. I'm a small businessman, I have to watch every dollar. I'm looking at having to dig up a big chunk of money to just stay in business. That's why I would like to see our existing permits, you know, discussed as renewes. And then also in the, in the new paragraph, I, I think that's a pretty good idea because it gets you involved with the conditional use permit application, there's another five, 600 bucks to get that done. I would like to see dimensional stone and decorative stone moved out of the minerals. That would be in contrary to what the state does, but the reason why the state put those in there is because they have a very, very large operation up in the Billbank area and they wanted to get them into a mine permit situation out of a mine license and that's why they did that. But I think Pinkton County could go ahead and take that out of there so that we could be in the sand gravel. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Jason Smiley on behalf of GCC Dakota, otherwise known as the Cement Plant. I would like to propose that heavy industrial be treated somewhat differently than other zoning districts. In particular, you know, the, the Cement Plant purchased this property and its existing facilities from the state of South Dakota. And in fact, I'll refer you to a statute, it's STCL 11-2-66. And at that time, what it says essentially is at the end of the year 2000, everything that the state of South Dakota had was deemed to be in conformity with the existing zoning ordinances. That was done specifically for the purpose of being able to sell this property to the Cement Plant so that they knew that they wouldn't have any issues with mining the property. And so now we have a large tract of land and the Cement Plant does have other holdings. They have some in the agricultural district as well, but their largest portion is in heavy industrial. It is on the other side of Highway 79 North, immediately adjacent to the Cement Plant. It's often referred to as the Grimm property. And so my, my, my first proposal is for exemptions. We're asking to be grandfathered in for that property in particular. My proposed language would be property purchased from the state of South Dakota and located in the heavy industrial district shall be exempt from the permit requirement. In addition, I would argue that property currently being mined and located in the heavy industrial district should be exempt from the permit requirement, provided it's not expanded. And the reason for this, again, in part, is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion of Section 507 and the prior permitting requirements. Well, the Cement Plant's purchase of its property predates even that ordinance, okay? So I'm not quite sure what we'd be going back to in terms of my client's holdings and its intent to mine that. And it does intend to mine that. That's the very next thing it needs to do. And what I want this, this board to understand is that if it does not do that within the next year, it's going to be out of limestone, okay? And you're, we're literally talking about shutting down an industry in Rapid City. That's how concerned they are, is that they sent me here today to tell you they are very, very concerned about the endless possibility of ongoing litigation, of ongoing attempts to stop what is a very important industry in this county. So that's their single biggest concern. The aggrieved standard, I want to turn to the aggrieved standard for a minute because it's a good one and it's a well-understood term. It's in lots and lots of cases in the state of South Dakota. I'm, sir, may.
I'll give you a little leeway because.
Yeah, and I, I will try to be brief. The aggrieved standard is a good one because we all know what it means. I mean, someone that's actually been injured. The differentiation, I don't think anybody's said this yet, is it's a case-by-case analysis, right? It's a fact-intensive inquiry. And so the court has an opportunity, whoever's considering it, has an opportunity to consider whether or not the people involved have standing because they've actually been injured, okay? That's why it's a good standard. That's why it should be there. The renewal issue is also very problematic in that it's five years and I'm proposing that that be expanded to at least the, the mine plan oftentimes is 10 years, sometimes 20 years. And to have, and for all the same reasons, the critical infrastructure, the amount of money that they're investing, to have to come back in five years and run through the gauntlet again is just terrible for these companies that plan these long-term investments. I had two other quick points and I promise I will be quick. The in harmony language is essentially a conditional use process is what you're establishing, okay? It's going to be, I, I'm reasonably confident that a court would interpret that as being entirely discretionary. So all of this work that you've put in to creating a situation where your planning director can enact, require certain things of these mining companies, I think that's going to be undercut by essentially, if nothing else, referendum. I, I think that's what you're creating here by using that language and by not establishing a process for these mining companies to come in and say, here are the things that we as this board have worked very hard to ensure that the safety of the public, if you do these things, you get to go forward. I think what you're creating is a process that's going to be entirely undercut. Lastly, on the agricultural district, you know, as, as this body is well aware, that is where most of the aggregate and limestone exists in the county. And it's a bit ironic to me that I have yet, in any committee meeting I've been to, and I haven't been to all of them, I'm, I'm rather new to this process, but in, in any committee that I've been to or even in this hearing here today, I have yet to hear a farmer or a rancher come up here and tell you. a rancher come up here and tell you that mining in ag district is problematic. Right? So, I mean, when we're talking about the purpose and intent of these districts, I don't think it should be lost on this board that the agricultural district was primarily for agriculture. It wasn't for homeowners, for residences, to have their, you know, 40 acres in a view. It was a different purpose. And that purpose happens to be a lot more compatible with mining than it is residences. So I don't think that should be lost on this board. I realize I went over my time. I thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments to add anything new to what we've heard?
Gina Parkers again, homeowner of Rapid City. Nobody's mentioned the Rochford gold exploration that maybe, I think it has started or is about to start, and that could lead to a permit or a license application for a gold mine. So very important that we address that, that very short bit of text in Section 507. I just wanted to mention that because nobody else has mentioned that.
I just shook my head, sorry Gina.
No, no, that's okay.
I've known you before this, but, so you're used to me, but I don't know where we're going with that. I didn't know, I'll just say this up straight, guys. I didn't know 507B. I knew it was coming, but I knew it'd be problematic because it's not going to have enough information. So hopefully it doesn't stop there, but that wasn't the intent of our committee to put it in there. What it does was brought forward later in case somebody wanted to do a mining permit. I don't know where we need to go with that, so...
I just wanted to bring it up because the company, I think it's called Mineral Mountain Resources, wants to have a mine as big as the Home State Mine up in Lead. So it's a big deal that could be coming up. It is coming up. It's here now, so the proposal, exploration. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Can you briefly respond to one point, Attorney Smiley?
Yes, briefly. And then I'm going to open it up to the board here to ask questions because I'm sure they may have some questions after everything that was going on.
I'm Sylvia Cox again, and he said that he didn't think there was a problem because he never heard a farmer or a rancher complain about mining gravel on agriculturally-zoned property. But in many cases, and in a particular case with which I am involved, the agriculture property is surrounded by ordinary commercial property, by residences that have been there for many years, and that's why I urge you to not change the underlying use provisions of the zoning law, but instead to permit these mining companies to rely on applications for particular zoning variances or for changes in the zoning law specifically because each case should be looked at independently. That's my comment.
Thank you. I'm going to let Brian, if y'all don't mind, since he hasn't had a chance to speak.
Thank you. Just one follow-up comment, and I'm definitely not an attorney. I can't cite the Supreme Court or anything of that nature, but I can say that just looking at the zoning book that I have, under permitted uses, it says all agricultural uses shall be allowed in the A1 general ag district, including but not limited to the following. And on point 17, mining provided a construction permit is obtained in accordance with these zoning ordinances. So maybe I'm not understanding it correct, but my understanding all along was that mining is allowed within general ag as permitted use so long as you get a permit. And I just want to comment just a bit further that, first off, I appreciate the opportunity to have been on the committee, and I think that through this process, we've given the county a much better tool to review these mining permits when they come in, far better than existed previous to this. And the work that the community and committee members put into this definitely shouldn't be lost. We've worked towards a resolution where all parties can be heard, and a lot of input went into this to make sure that everybody's views were taken into account. So just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori.
What's Brian's last name?
Tiedemann?
Tiedemann.
Tiedemann.
Say again.
Tiedemann.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to open it up to the board to ask them some questions. They may want some clarification.
I just have to say that the zoning law about A1 has just been misquoted because the recent Supreme Court decision says that A1...
Thank you.
...does not permit commercial mining in agricultural...
Okay. Anyone on the Planning Commission have any questions for any of the public for some of their statement, comments, concerns? Would you like any of them to expand upon them?
Just one. We didn't shut anybody down at the committee. What I did is, number one, I had a migraine, so I didn't see some people. So I'll say that up straight. Number two, when one of the ladies was speaking, that we didn't let her speak, it was because we were going through the paragraphs, and we weren't on that paragraph yet, and it was verified by...
And I was there.
Yeah, so it wasn't that we didn't want you to speak, it's that we weren't on that paragraph, so we let everybody speak through what page and paragraph we were on at the time. So we weren't trying to be rude, but we've had, again, the meeting before that, that's why we came up here and we tried to do a meeting because we had so many people at the last meeting where most of the time, we just let people sit where they wanted to. The citizens and the people were kind of, the citizens, we ran out of room for people to sit, so we let people sit at the table, which we didn't mind. So everybody had a voice, and then it was easy to let everybody speak whenever they wanted to a little bit on that board. So when people feel like they didn't have enough input, and one of the guys had said that one of our people had left, and he didn't leave. He was on our board. He went on vacation once, and then he came on our board for a little bit, and he was from the school mines. And then what happened was, he wasn't replaced. Actually, we added Mr. Abada. So Abada didn't replace him. Abada was on there at the same time. Dwayne Abada was a citizen. So we appreciated all the comments, and I do appreciate Dwayne and his comments on our committee. So I think he had some good information, just like everybody else. So he wasn't taking anybody's place. He was added, and actually, I added him to it because there was some other people that wanted to have more citizen input on there, so...
Any further input from the board? Any questions? Any follow-up?
One more thing. I'm sorry.
Yep, nope.
Heavy industrial, if we make, I'm listening to the conditional use, and I don't know how you go there to a certain extent. Conditional uses are through Planning Commission. I don't know if we, their final decision in planning or not. I can't remember all that. But if you do heavy industrial, you got to be careful putting heavy industrial as a use and letting, because if the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Commission's saying, okay, heavy industrial and mining in this area, we decided because they met the conditions they should do that. Remember, once that land is reclaimed, it's heavy industrial. So I don't know where that balance is, but once you turn it into heavy industrial, what can be in heavy industrial? So once you take mining out, it's heavy industrial. It's zoned heavy industrial. So that needs to be considered when we're saying what mining should be, if it's a conditional use, or what it should be. I'm not saying I'm wrong or right. I'm saying there's more discussion on it. So, Ms. Sylvia, did you have a comment on that? Because I might be wrong, but I guess I'm saying if you have heavy industrial and you do that, what happens when that land, do you, once it's zoned that?
Can you come to the mic real quick?
Sylvia, maybe you could clarify. You thought they should, if you, did you say that mining should be in heavy industrial and that's the only spot it should be in?
Yes. And if you're saying that mining should be allowed in agricultural because it will be reclaimed, and therefore it should not be allowed, and you should not rezone agricultural to heavy industrial, that's a real straw man argument because if an area is zoned agriculture, you should go through a rezoning process if you're going to turn it into heavy industrial.
But that's not what I...
The Supreme Court says that mining...
Sylvia, that's not what she's saying. Listen to what she's saying. Just a second. She's asking you a question, please.
I'm saying, I'm not saying that it's okay in A1 agriculture. What I'm saying is, once you put it in heavy industrial, like you're saying, make mining heavy industrial, whether it's reclaimed or not, it's still zoned heavy industrial. So once, it could be problematic because once it's called heavy industrial, they can rezone it, but if they don't, what could really be next to you in heavy industrial? It might not be mining. It might be a chemical company because it's zoned that. So if we zone these properties, these 192 properties in these areas next to these people, and we say conditional use of mining, or we do something different, that's fine, but if we say heavy industrial, I know a lot of people are going to disagree that are living next to mining companies that are saying heavy industrial, because once they're gone, they might like them, the mining company being there, but they don't want what's coming next. That's all I'm saying.
I really don't understand a word of what you're saying. Right now, the zoning law says if you want to do commercial gravel mining up to and including, and this is what's going to happen everywhere it's permitted, cement plants, whether temporary or permanent, has to be in heavy industrial. Agricultural mining for gravel is currently limited, and it's been, that limit has been reinforced by the recent state Supreme Court decision. So the only, I can only think that you're thinking that if someone wants to do heavy industrial gravel mining in an agricultural zone, you're going to have to rezone it to heavy industrial or get a zoning variance. And I say that's correct. And beyond that, I don't understand what your problem is.
I don't have a problem, Ms. Sylvia, but thank you. I appreciate all your discussion, but unfortunately, you're making it like I have a problem with it. I'm asking a question. I don't, I'm asking you for your opinion to know that. So it's not that it's a problem for me. I'm trying to get to the bottom line.
Are you suggesting that every time anyone wants to do heavy industrial-type gravel mining in an agricultural district, it will have to be rezoned? Is that the premise of your...
I don't know. I'm going through a mining, asking for opinions, just like I was at the committee. I'm asking for opinions. I'm not determined, just like most of the people here, they're listening to your opinions and they want to know so they can get to the bottom line. We're not disagreeing or agreeing with you at this point. I just needed your opinion.
My opinion is, heavy industrial is heavy industrial, agricultural is agriculture, and as currently formulated, it does not include the opportunity to gravel mine to the commercial extent. Okay? And so if someone wants to do that in that property, they can either get the zoning law changed with respect to that property, or they can get a zoning variance. And I submit that that's a correct approach because agricultural properties are not, as Attorney Smiley says, all ranchers and farmers who don't care whether or not there's gravel. In the particular situation I'm thinking of, the property's surrounded by bear country, by the reptile garden, by several housing developments, by people in the neighborhood who are going to be affected, and by traffic on Route 16. It's not just some agricultural district out in nowhere where no one's going to be affected, and that's why specific zoning changes and zoning variances are the proper approach because then you can look at each case, and you can decide whether or not anyone cares about it or is affected by it. And affected, by the way, means aggrieved, means you've already been hurt. So I don't know how you can have a standard of aggrievance before the permit is granted as being the only basis for objecting because no one will be hurt until after the license has been granted and there's been activity on the property.
And thank you, Ms. Sylvia, because it's not just, I'm only one, so I'm just listening to what you're saying. I'm not the final decision, and there's still a long process.
Well, I think the zoning law is very clear. That's the bottom line.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? If not, currently, there is a recommendation by staff for approval of the ordinance. There's a couple other ways to go. It can be continued. It could be not approved, or it could be sent up, it could be not recommended, or it could be recommended to the Board of Commissioners.
Chair?
Yes, Kathy.
I would like, I suggest that we continue it. I wouldn't be comfortable voting on this until I see the revised draft, you know, as it's been done here. I'd like to have it in front of me and read it on paper before, you know, we have the vote.
And make sure we're in line with what it says, and make sure it says everything we wanted to say. Fair enough. I would entertain a motion for said.
Can I make a question?
Sure.
If you're going to continue it.
If you're going to come up here, come on up and speak in the microphone.
If you're going to continue it, can we still send in written comments? You know, no way I could put what I wanted to in the three minutes. All right. Can you clarify who to send them to, by what deadline?
We will, but PJ, would you like to speak to that real quick? And if I, if I'm correct, it would be continuing to our Monday meeting. Is that correct?
I'm actually up to ask you to make very specific that if we go to the 22nd, January 22nd.
January 22nd.
Yeah. And as far as sending in comments, I know Nancy has my card. She's emailed me several times, so she can send them to me. They can send them to Jerry. That's fine. And the emails, the way to access our office through emails, through our webpage.
So the Planning Commission goes through you guys, but there is a website for county commissioners too that you can get on the website and send them to them as well. So you're never limited to how many comments you want to give to us. So at least, I'm speaking for the county commission, and I'm sure PJ thinks the same way, that he can forward it on to the Planning Commission.
To get them as part of the official packet that goes out to the board before the meeting, we'd need them no later than probably noon tomorrow. But anything that comes in after that, if we can, we scan them, we send them out to the Planning Commissioners, and then hand out hard copies the morning of.
The morning of, yep.
So it has one more reading. If they agree, this is if they agree on Monday, it goes to the Planning Commission. I'm sorry. If, now I'm getting, I've been at a lot of meetings lately. First of all, it would go to the Planning Commission on Monday. If they agreed and pass this through and what their decision is, if they move it to the next step, then it still has two more readings from the Board of Commissioners. So there's still two more meetings, or it could have 10 more, depending if it was continued or not. But for sure, there's always two more meetings at the Board of Commissioners after the Planning Commission. So everybody knows they still have lots of time to vet some of their comments.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So is there a motion?
To continue?
If you would like to.
I'll make a motion to continue this until our, until the meeting on Monday, January 22.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All right.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Chair?
Sure, Lori.
Is it possible, do we want to clear the agenda for the Monday meeting to just discuss this, or does PJ have some comment on that?
He has a comment of shaking his head. I don't think that's possible.
The agenda's quite extensive already. There'd be a lot of people that would be put off and having their decisions delayed unless you held a special meeting after that, but everything's been advertised for Monday 22.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Jerry, can you do a real call vote? Oh, Lori?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you very much. That means we are now to adjournment. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Lori?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Thank you for giving us your input.